Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostik.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe. Is here.
Yep, she's connecting. Terrific. Well, welcome, everyone. Before we kind of get into our meeting, I first want to welcome our new city manager, Mr. Jamal Fox has joined us, so we're all very glad to see you this evening. And it's hard to believe you've been on the job for a month. I'm sure it feels like a few years. But we all look forward to working with you and we're glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. The other item I just want to note is obviously we are still virtual. We had discussed in July moving our meetings to in-person. However, given the rise of the Delta variant and also wanting to make sure that we had in place proper safety protocols and everything to hold our meetings in-person, we decided to delay coming back in-person for the next little while. So definitely for the month of September, our meetings will continue to be virtual and we will reassess during this month. And with that, on our agenda tonight, the meeting agenda did have a slight change yesterday. We just moved around the order of the work sessions. So the update on the American Rescue Package funding will go first and the discussion of the EV street sweeper purchase is now last. So we just switched to those two things. Looking ahead at our agenda going forward, next week on Tuesday evening, the city council will have a special meeting with the Tree Commission. That will be at 6:30. It will be virtual and people can watch it as well. We will not have a meeting on Wednesday, September 15th, as Yonkapor begins at sundown that night. The council will be in a closed session on Thursday, September 16th to discuss matters related to collective bargaining negotiations with Astmi, our union. That will be at 6:00 PM, but again, that will be a closed session. And then we'll come back for our regular council meeting on Wednesday, September 22nd. Our meeting will begin at 6:00 PM that night and we'll begin with a presentation from the consultants who are helping us with redistricting. So that will begin at 6:00 PM. And then we'll begin our regular meeting and we'll have that evening a voting session. Hopefully, if we get our work done tonight, we will have the first reading ordinance, our code amendment to our boards and committees, a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of an EV street sweeper, and tentatively a resolution establishing a sustainable investment in banking task force. Our work sessions on the evening of the 22nd will include discussion of an FY22 budget amendment number two, discussion of ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Personnel Chapter 4.04.320, holiday leave to add Juneteenth as a recognized leap of holiday in the city, and a work session tentatively that night for a discussion of an ordinance for the field maintenance landscape contract. Our next meeting and our last meeting in September will be on September 29th. That meeting will begin at 7:30 PM. That night, we will have a public hearing on traffic calming for the 7900 block of Tacoma Avenue and traffic calming on Albarn Avenue. Again, those are public hearings that will begin at 7:30 at night. We will then have a presentation from our Grants Review Committee, their report for the FY21 grantees. Our voting session on the evening of the 29th will include a resolution regarding redistricting criteria, first reading ordinance approving FY22 budget amendment number two, the second reading ordinance of code amendments for our boards and committees, the first reading ordinance amending our personnel chapter to add Juneteenth as an official holiday, and an ordinance approving a landscape contract for field maintenance. Our work sessions that evening will be the traffic calming on the 7900 block of Tacoma Avenue and traffic calming on Albarn Avenue. So those are our upcoming meetings for September. Now I move to our proclamations this evening. We have a number of the proclamations tonight for the month of September. So the first one is National Preparedness Month is in September. This year's theme is Prepare to Protect: Preparing for Disasters is Protecting Everyone You Love. Read the rest of the proclamation. Whereas National Preparedness Month is observed every September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas each week in September focuses on a different aspect of preparedness for individuals, families, and communities. The first week of September was Make a Plan. The second week, which we're in now, is Build a Kit. The third week of September, starting September 12th, is Low Cost, No Cost Preparedness. And the week of September 19th is Teach Use About Preparedness. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for the Tacoma Park community to focus on preparing its homes, businesses, churches, schools, and institutions for any type of emergency, including storms, natural disasters, and accidents. And whereas investing in preparedness can reduce fatalities, prevent physical and economic damage, and aid in the accelerated recovery after events in our communities. And whereas the Tacoma Park Emergency Preparedness Committee advises the city council on preparedness issues and serves as a resource for residents by promoting preparedness at community events, writing articles, hosting activities, and preparing educational materials. And whereas all residents of the city of Tacoma Park are encouraged to be informed, make a plan, and build a kit for disasters and get involved in preparedness activities. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby proclaim September 2021 as Preparedness Month in Tacoma Park and encourage all residents, families, organizations, and businesses to develop their own emergency plans and work together, creating a more prepared and resilient community. Our next proclamation is for Car Free Day, which will be Wednesday, September 22nd. Read that proclamation. Whereas the National Capital Region Transportation Planning Board is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Washington region. And whereas the TPB through its commuter connections program promotes and organizes the annual Car Free Day event along with its network members throughout the Washington area. And whereas Car Free Day invites Washington region residents to try alternative forms of transportation such as bicycling, walking, and public transportation, as well as car light methods such as carpools, van pools, teleworking, and making fewer trips by car. And whereas a Car Free Day benefits the National Capital Region through improved air quality, reduced traffic congestion, and parking demands, and the conservation of energy. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is located in close proximity to multiple forms of transportation, including the metro, bus lines, bike share stations, dockless e-scooters, and off-street bike trails to facilitate car-free transportation. And whereas Tacoma Park recognizes the necessity of reducing car trips and transitioning to sustainable forms of transportation to combat climate change and create a more livable community for all. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council staff and residents, hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021 as Car Free Day and encourage all residents to pledge to be a car free or car light by visiting www.carfreemetrodc.org. Our final resolution tonight is recognizing crossing guard Doris Rogers and proclaiming September 9th, that was tomorrow, 2021, as Doris Rogers Day in Tacoma Park. Whereas Ms. Rogers began her career as a crossing guard in Tacoma Park on September 1st, 1971. I did say 1971. She arrived at the police station at the end of August, 1971, to inquire about the crossing guard position and was hired on the spot. She was given a uniform and told to start on September 1st. And whereas Mrs. Rogers is the longest-serving city of Tacoma Park employee, and whereas Mrs. Rogers has lived in Tacoma Park at the same address for over 50 years, she raised three sons and one daughter who all attended school in Tacoma Park. And whereas Mrs. Rogers assisted Chief Dival in getting to school when he attended Tacoma Park Elementary School and Piney Branch Middle School from 1972 to 1978. And whereas Mrs. Rogers has worked every post in Tacoma Park, but has been at Maple Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue the longest. And whereas Mrs. Rogers is a dedicated crossing guard, rain or shine, she is at her post and ready to work every day. And whereas Chief Dival says, "Mrs. Doris was my neighborhood crossing guard growing up in Tacoma Park. I passed her post every day as I went to and from school. She always greeted me with a warm smile and created a sense of comfort for my friends and I. Fifty years later, and she continues to have the same smile and impact on our children. Mrs. Doris is a true Tacoma Park treasure." Therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, residents, and staff proclaim September 9th, 2021 as Doris Rogers Day and recognize her dedication and commitment in keeping our community safe. And tomorrow morning, we will be having a small event for Doris as she helps people cross safely to school. It's going to start kind of early, so depending on when we finish tonight, I may just go over to Philadelphia and make the avenue. So anyway, we're looking forward to tomorrow. Lastly, for things for the public record, I do want to recognize that in the next few days, it marks the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Nearly 3,000 people lost their lives that day. It impacted the lives of survivors, first responders, witnesses, and many of us in communities across the country. I just want to take a moment for us to remember those who we lost that day and all of those whose lives were changed forever. Thank you. And I do think our volunteer fire department is going to mark the event on Saturday morning, but I don't have details yet. We'll let council know when I hear about them. So next now, each September, we get to welcome a new youth council to the city. And this year, they will be having their first meeting on this Sunday, September 12th, at 3:00 PM. And I think we're joined by a number of the youth council. I don't know if you all feel like turning on your cameras. There's Faith. Thank you, Faith, is one of our youth council members. I think I saw, let's see, Noel, Joy, Julia, who is returning, Soraya, Leo. Who else did I miss? Camelia and I thought I missed somebody else. I said Leo, right? If I missed anyone else, just shout your name. Dakota. I see Dakota. Great. Well, we're all like, oh, and Y'Kobe. Y'Kobe, I didn't see you. We got you as well. Well, we also just want to welcome you all as the youth council this year. We're excited to work with all of you throughout the year. And as a tradition, I'd just like to extend the invitation. In the past, the youth council has come once a month to report to the council on your activities. And so during your meeting on Sunday, if that's something that you want to consider continuing this year, we would love to have you. So just let us know. So any questions for us or any comments? No? All right. Well, we look forward to working with you all. And thank you so much for being willing and stepping up to serve on the youth council. Great. Now we will turn our attention to our public comments. And I'm going to turn it over to our, let's see, our city clerk, who I think has the list, correct?
Yes, Rebecca Woodings is first on the list and she has joined us.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of Tacoma Park City Council. My name is Rebecca Woodings. I am actually a 20-year Tacoma Park resident, but this is my first time presenting a statement for this group. This morning, each of you received via email a Community Assistant Survey Report. The report was prepared by two groups. First, the Social Witness and Action Committee, or SWAC, of which I'm a co-chair of the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. And second, TPPC's Racial Mindfulness Initiative. Our report surveyed a number of local community groups. Most, if not all of which, will be familiar to you and to city staff. Our goal was to ascertain critical needs in our community as seen through the eyes of groups that are already active and engaged in serving our Tacoma Park neighbors in need. The needs we identified include the following: housing assistance. And that doesn't mean just rent and mortgage, but also utilities. Second, food assistance. Third, health care. And again, not just basic health care or vaccination efforts, but also mental health needs. And finally, workforce development, so that our neighbors in need can begin to rebuild a future for themselves and their families. Each of the community groups that are surveyed and discussed in our report are key local mission partners known to our church and its members for the work they do and their impact in our community. Each group could expand their efforts with additional funding and logistical support. I mentioned that health care in our community includes mental health. We strongly concur with the reimagining task force. That now is the time to move forward with improved public safety by establishing a mobile crisis unit as an alternative to policing response for mental illness and related concerns. Please let Tacoma Park be a leader in this area. We recognize that the city has already allocated $500,000 as a down payment for immediate housing and food needs. We would encourage you to put the vast majority of remaining first-year funds to work as quickly as possible. The idea would be to address pressing human needs for those most affected by the pandemic and its economic and health woes. You have a unique opportunity to do so much for the most vulnerable members of our community. We remain engaged in supporting your efforts. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much and thank you for the report. I just lost my list. I think Victor is next. Yes, Victor, you're next.
Thank you. My name is Victor Tironi. I live at 201 Hodges Lane. And I'd like to speak in support of establishing the Task Force on Sustainable Banking and Investments. The task force should come up with a proposed policy for city banking and investments. While it will have no legal authority, if it does its job well, it will come up with a plan that the council can approve. The task force should consult with city staff and council members to make sure that its proposal has broad support and is workable and does not impose a substantial burden on the city. The task force should look to what other cities and institutions have done. No need to reinvent the wheel. At the same time, Tacoma Park is a small, progressive city. We can be nimble and may well be able to come up with a plan that other cities can emulate. Besides developing a socially responsible investment plan, the task force should review the existing Nuclear Free Zone Act and recommend changes. This act has been around for a while. It can use some updating and benefit from clarifying the role of the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. Again, Tacoma Park should be a leader for other cities in serving as a focal point for citizen involvement to bring about an end to nuclear weapons of gold that I'm sure all of us support. I'd strongly recommend that the council hold off in this month on making amendments to the Nuclear Free Zone Act and instead await the task force's recommendations. These will be received before the end of January. So it's a small city. The council, I suggest, should use its time wisely. And it'd be much more efficient, instead of, you know, making some amendments now and then maybe having to change them and to wait and at one time make all the amendments to the Nuclear Free Zone Act as a legislative drafter. That is a, it's a much more streamlined procedure. So I would, I hope the council will adopt that course. And again, if the task force does its job well, it will consult broadly and come up with proposals on the Nuclear Free Zone Act that I think the council can support. Thank you very much. And I'd be happy to, if there are no questions, I'd be happy to. I've been in touch with a number of council members by email, so would be happy to answer any questions. Just shoot me an email.
Great. Thank you so much, Victor. Next, we have Mr. Buddy Daniels.
Somebody better wake him up.
He was on the phone, so I'm not sure if we're having a hard time connecting. And check with Ms. Carpenter. Are we able to connect with Mr. Daniels? Oh, Ms. Carpenter's screen is frozen. Hold on one second. All right. It seems our city clerk's computer is completely frozen. So I will, I think the deputy city manager is a co-host. And if you can, we'll go now to Ms. A.J. Campbell for her public comments and then come back to Mr. Buddy Daniels. So Ms. Campbell, you can unmute yourself and you can go next.
Okay, do you see me?
Don't see you. We can hear you, though.
That's weird. Um, okay, well, I, hmm. I'll just read it then, if that's okay. So I'm A.J. Campbell and I live on Roanoke Avenue in Ward 5. And I'm here today to talk about dodgy landlords who avoid registering their rentals in Tacoma Park for years. My condo building is supposed to be called the Roanoke Condos, but our building was never incorporated or registered in Montgomery County. This has caused huge problems in the management of the building. Tax returns have not been filed. The organization hasn't been incorporated. Fire codes were not kept up. There are expired fire extinguishers in the building. There are no reserves to fix building repairs. And only some of the rentals have been registered in Tacoma Park. The unit across from me has been rented out by the one condo owner since 2013, and it is not registered. There's a tenant in there now who lives in this unlicensed, uninspected rental. The unit below me is a woman who rented out her unit from around 2012 to 2019, when she was overseas working. And the Swedish national who was living there might not have known about how to file complaints or the landlord-tenant court or to report hazardous conditions. And she was overseas, so she probably couldn't have helped anyway. It's our benefit to have the city register all the rentals, but our system just isn't working. We need comprehensive information outreach programs to people moving into the city, regular features in the newsletter, and, excuse me, surveying available rental listings to find unlisted rentals. We might do what the Common Ownership Community Office does when it works with condo boards that require an annual education program for board members. It might be a great idea for landlords and tenants to receive or view videos about how the system works, how complaint filing works, and what options are available to landlords and renters if there's dispute or problems. I think if we do this and we sort of take a look at the system and find out ways that we can improve what we're doing, I think we'll go far to catch some of these new, some of these listings that come on. And most of Tacoma Park, I believe, are renters. And so I think it would benefit all of us to sort of relook at the way we're doing and see if we can improve upon it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Next, I think we will now unmute Mr. Daniels. Yes. Buddy, are you with us?
All right, it should be unmuted. I'm with you. I'm with you. I know. I tell you, this phone did something that people have been trying to do for a long time. That's for me to be. But, um, the reason why I wanted to speak tonight is I just wanted to let you know, let the council know that on October 9th, Saturday, there will be a memorial to honor the memory of Pat Lovelace from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Hefner Community Center. Today, I put a flyer about the event in your mailbox at the community center and will send you the flyer by email or maybe drop a hard copy by your homes. I just wanted to let the council know about the event. If you can please spread the word to people in the community who knew Pat, that would be so helpful. I will be contacting some of the former council members and many other elected officials who knew Pat, let them know about this memorial. Anyone can participate in the event, but they do need to let Candace Woof, the coordinator, know by email or by phone. And also, if you just plan to attend, please RSVP. I will be forwarding the information to you, like I said, by email or dropping it. I'm going to be dropping hard copies out all over the city, off all over the city. But I thank you. And one other comment, "Thank you for your silence about 9/11." There's, I just wrote this a minute ago, so it's a little rough. We had a memorial on September 19th in Tacoma Park. I worked on the committee and moderated the memorial. We held it in front of the old community center. We had no idea how many people would show up. We had a number of speakers, including Jimmy Jarboe. I had no idea how many people were there because it had become dark and I was busy moderating. At the end, though, I walked out into the crowd and saw at least 300 to 500 people, the entire front. It was the old community center, obviously, and the entire front parking lot was filled up. People were mostly in tears, but I want to tell you, people from this community came out and supported victims of 9/11 and voiced their concern and their caring. It was a very emotional night. This has been a very few emotional days for me, remembering that and a couple of friends I lost at the Pentagon. I just wanted to share that with the council when you mentioned having the silence. And again, I thank you for that very much. This community came out for sure after 9/11. So thank you all very much, and I'll get those flyers to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. I believe that is our last public comment this evening. And I believe we have our city clerk back online as well. So now we will move to council comments. Any council members, you've been off for a whole month from regular meetings. So I imagine you have some things to say. Who would like to go first? Councilwoman Dibala is up first. You're on mute. You're on mute, I think.
Okay, let's try that again. Sometimes you forget if you've been out for a month. First, thank you for the proclamation for Doris Rogers, and congratulations, Doris. I'm really looking forward to tomorrow. Doris is a 50-year, two, 50-year, two, Ward 2 resident, in addition to being a 50-year crossing guard. It's awesome. And welcome to the youth council. Really glad to have you on board. I wanted to let everybody know that Habitat for Humanity had their first of a series of, of community build sessions this morning over on Garland Avenue, the two-unit, two homeowner unit project that we partnered with Habitat on. And it was, there were plenty of volunteers, there was lots of enthusiasm. It was the demo part, ripping out the kitchens, so a lot of, a lot of cabinets flying. It was great, and thank you to Bevco for the snacks and drinks. I wanted to mention the Long Branch Festival this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. You can Google "Discover Long Branch" and it'll show all the music and food and all what's going on. And I wanted to let everybody know that there was a neighborhood meeting on the speed bumps for Auburn. Nine families attended virtually on Labor Day weekend, and all of them support the two-speed bump proposal, which you'll be hearing about in a couple of weeks. And last, two, two more things. Thank you, DPW, thank you, Darrell and staff. People are going back to, kids are going back to school, parents are walking around and they're noticing stuff, and they're calling, and they're asking for things to be done, so thank you. And then finally, two, uh, three cog meetings next week. One Chesapeake Bay program has its annual meeting with state and EPA officials. That will be virtual, but it's usually very informative, particularly about stormwater. The building council is meeting on building codes, and Montgomery County's code proposal will be discussed. And the climate group is meeting, and the topic will be electric vehicles. Each of the communities will share what they're doing and what they're planning to pave the way for electric vehicles. So I'll get back to all of you when we have those. Thank you very much. Good to be back.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Smith.
I would like to start off thanking Jackwood Frazier, Doris Duarte, for all their hard work, bringing home lunch and learn this summer, second year during a pandemic, but they made it happen. I want to thank all of the young people that participated in the program. I'm glad you had an opportunity to go see the Baltimore Aquarium. And I saw it a long, long time ago, and it's always a great experience. So thank you, guys. I know it was tough, but you guys were able to make it happen. And I look forward to having lunch and learn next year. I want to welcome Mr. Fox to the city Tacoma Park. I look forward to working with him and his ideas on improving processes at the city level and building true racial equity, not just on the city staff, but with the residents in this city. I had, oh, yes, A.J. Campbell. I hope city staff takes a few minutes to read over her testimony and look at ways to improve our system regarding condo units. I know they're registered at the county level, but I think that there must be something that we can do to assure residents, whether you own a unit or you rent a condo unit, that it is being maintained and reviewed at the same quality, the same level that we do most of our rental units in, in the city. So I hope we can find a way to make these improvements. I know the housing department does not currently have the staff to do this, so there might be some way to do this with technology or another avenue so that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Smith. Next, we have Councilwoman Cerci.
Hello, I hope I'm unmuted because I've had to change my setup a little bit here. I want to first start out by welcoming the youth council. We are so excited to have you all here, had the opportunity to attend an event this summer hosted by Faith Smith and her, her family with young entrepreneurs. So I'm just super excited to have such talented youth that have been doing so much work. Julia and others have been doing a lot of work in the city already, and to have you all together on the youth council is just going to be such a true asset to the city, so thank you all so much. There's been a lot of meetings that have happened over recess, so it doesn't really quite feel like much of a recess. I want to thank the resident volunteers who've been meeting over the summer to establish the Tacoma Lainey Crossroads Foundation. And that is an organization that is designed to serve as a nonprofit arm to help with revitalization of the crossroads area and enable the crossroads area to acquire grants that might ultimately help with place making and public space development and business technical support. So I definitely want to thank those residents that have been volunteering in that capacity over the course of the summer. The Crossroads Farmers Market is still happening, it is awesome. If you haven't had a chance to go out on Wednesdays, there's been vaccination clinics happening, lots of vendors out there of wonderful food, so definitely want to encourage people to show up on Wednesdays and grab some new food. We also have, I want to thank Public Works. I feel like everyone has been contacting Public Works a lot over the last few weeks. Last week, Darrell and I met with residents in the Larch, Larch, Kintland, Hopewell neighborhood about traffic calming installation there. Just want to let folks know that the meeting went really well, and the desire is to move forward with the project. So in terms of next steps, you can expect to see more meeting invitations as we move forward with identifying engineers and design options for the traffic calming in the area. So I want to thank all of those residents who took time out to attend that meeting last week, but also to speak with me offline about what your thoughts and concerns were, that was very helpful. And also, Ian has been working a lot with addressing questions on the Elson stormwater work that's happening right now. So definitely want to thank Public Works for being responsive to resident questions around the stormwater installation that's happening in the area. So again, I'm happy to be back, back in session. And again, want to thank all of the folks that have been working over the course of this summer to advance our community.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Kostic.
Everyone, great to see you all and be back. I just want to start off by welcoming our new city manager, Mr. Fox. I'm very excited to have you here and at your first city council meeting. And also, I know a number of new staff members in the city have started as well in the past couple of months, so I want to welcome them also. As a couple of other council members have said, I also am very excited to have our new youth council started, starting up this fall again, and I've had a chance to connect with the Ward 3 youth council members, and I'm excited to work with them and with the whole youth council this coming year as well. Just a couple of quick updates on some things. I'm sure I'm forgetting things after, it's been a month, but just, I have a couple of notes on a few things I wanted to specifically be sure to mention. The first was just a reminder to everyone of the importance of taking COVID precautions. There are a number of different places you can get vaccines for free. And reminder of the importance of wearing masks, of course. I had an opportunity to travel to the Midwest this summer and see firsthand the difference in mask wearing between here and other parts of the country. So I think we can congratulate ourselves on doing a pretty, pretty good job with our mask wearing overall, but it's really important that we continue to do that. And particularly important, as the young people are going back to school and children under the age of 12 are not able to be vaccinated yet, to take precautions to help protect them and others in the community. Speaking of back to school, there have been a number of people who've raised concerns about traffic and fast driving and unsafe driving with just an increase in traffic at the start of this full year. So I encourage everyone to just be careful. And also, where possible, would love to look at opportunities to ensure that our infrastructure is as safe as possible. We have some really great new things, like the flashing crosswalk lights on Maple Avenue that I think have improved safety a lot there. I've also been hearing a lot about the intersection at Carroll and Lincoln, which is a perpetual danger area, and there've been a number of fender benders and incidents there in the past week or so. So that's something I hope we can try to continue to find some solutions for and hope we can move forward with SHA on some of the things we've been asking them for at that intersection as well. And then finally, I had originally planned on having a virtual office hours this coming Sunday, but I am moving that to the following Sunday, September 19th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. on Zoom. It seems like whenever I schedule an office hours, I later realize it's at the same time as something else. And it is, the Sunday is the Folk Festival, so I want to make sure that people have an opportunity to take part in that. There's some, some virtual and some in-person opportunities there. So we'll be rescheduling that, but I hope people will join me virtually next, the following week on September 19th for some virtual office hours then. And that's it, thank you very much.
Great, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back to everyone. It was a nice vacation, but it's good to get back at work. I wanted to, of course, welcome Jamal Fox, our new city manager. I look forward with working with him through the coming year. And also the new staff members, we've had quite a few new staff members come in. We'd like to welcome them. And of course, the youth council, it's so good to see that reformed and ready to go. I just wanted to give my contact information. Mr. Buddy Daniels mentioned the Celebration Memorial that is going to be held for the official city peace delegate, Pat Lovelace, who passed before quite a while ago, but it was right in the middle of the heaviest part of the pandemic, and so we weren't able to have this memorial at that time. Mr. Daniels gave a lot of details on that. If anyone has any questions, they can contact me at 240-793-5108, or my city email address of terry s@tacoma park m d.gov. And that's it for tonight, I thank you all, and welcome back.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor, it's great to see you and everybody else. And as my colleagues have, I do want to welcome the new youth council members and also, of course, Jamal Fox, it sounded like a broken record, but we're very glad to have him here. And welcome, and then after saying that, of course, then I have a few things I want to suggest that he look into, so I'll mention those now. First off, and I think this is something we'll be discussing when we get into the work session momentarily, but I did want to acknowledge the presentation from the representative of the Presbyterian Church. And I think in particular, there are points about ensuring that we, that we do get a really solid sense for what the need is like in the city and do all we can to get the funds to folks in need as quickly as possible. I agree with that. And one example of that is the RFP that's going to be going out for the food and nutrition. And so I assume we'll be talking about that as well, to the extent that that can be made as much of an ASAP kind of thing as possible, I think that would be great. On the traffic safety issue, there was a pedestrian who was injured at the intersection of Philadelphia and Piney, Philadelphia Avenue and Piney Branch Road today. And we've talked in the past a lot about that intersection. State Highway has agreed to look at some changes there. I don't think they've done everything that we wanted to, and there are other safety issues that have come up. And both, I've mentioned, the man, some of the residents have along Philadelphia, of course elsewhere, and not just exclusively in Ward 1. And we've typically had these periodic meetings with State Highway to talk about these things. So I would like to ask Mr. Fox, and I don't know who schedules it, whether it's him or the mayor or whoever, but we're kind of overdue for that meeting, and I just think it would be something that, that we should try to get because there are a number of safety challenges for pedestrians, and I seem to hear about additional ones almost every, every week. So I encourage us to see if we can get that set up. A few people have asked about the monthly newsletter, and I understand with the mail, the way the US Mail is working these days, in many cases, that's going to mean that people don't get it as early as they would like to. In the past, I think it's typically been available online, even when it's not available for, for actual delivery. And I haven't had a chance to check myself, but I was told by someone who checked yesterday that it still wasn't online, so maybe we could just figure out what's happening with that. And for some reason, I've inaccurately sent out the information about this fall's play day hosted by Let's Play America, and that's in collaboration with the city's recreation department. So I have the strange compulsion to say it's on Sunday, the 26th, but it's on Saturday, September 25th. Saturday, the 25th, I'll be sending out a correction from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Tacoma Park Middle School. So those who would like to, I encourage you to come out, if you haven't been there before, to any of the play days. It's a, it's a great thing to participate in, for really people of any age. And I will say Jamal was a, was a great participant. I think in the cornhole, I saw a video of him doing that, anyway, so I was glad to see that. And then lastly, I just do want to mention with regard to, the mayor had mentioned the upcoming public hearings on traffic calming, and there is going to be a public meeting for those who are interested in it, will typically just be the residents of that block on Tacoma Avenue. That's happening on Saturday at 5:00 p.m. in that area. And so after that, we will be moving toward the, toward the vote, I believe. So that's all I have for now, thank you, and again, glad to see everybody, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. So I had the pleasure of going last, so I won't repeat all the wonderful things and announcements my colleagues noted. I do want to highlight a couple of things. One, over the recess, given what transpired in Afghanistan, we did send a letter to the Biden administration, supporting and standing ready to assist Afghans in need. And I want to thank our colleague, Councilwoman Kostic, for really being the impetus behind that and making sure that we sent that out. Related to that, tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. in downtown Silver Spring at the Civic Center there, Councilmember Evan Glass is holding an emergency rally for Afghan refugees to learn more about how to help them in our area. So people around, that might be a good thing to attend, and if there is useful information to bring back to the city, I will do that. This morning, I was able to go with our city staff, Lucy Mary and Helen from our planning department, and for safe routes to school, hand out masks, bicycle helmets, reflectors, and other things to students at Rolling Terrace. So again, I just want to thank Lucy for all. So again, I just want to thank Lucy for all her work on our Safe Routes to School program. It's a terrific one. And it was really nice to see the students at Rolling Terrace this morning. Councilmember Kovar, we are on that SHA meeting. And I think I have an idea for doing something a little bit different that might actually, who knows, get us more action on things, but more to come on that. We are on it. The other thing today, I was at a CAG, Council of Governments Board meeting. And one of the board members mentioned and requested that members of elected officials remind and request that on September 18th, when there are plans for protests in the, in DC, similar to what happened on January 6th, that we send out information and ask our residents, similar to how we did last year, not to go and counter protest, to please stay home, stay safe, and not to go into DC. So I'm sure there'll be more information about that as we get closer. But I just wanted to note, since we don't have a council meeting next week, that like we did last year, we are, I am asking residents to please stay safe, to not go and counter protest on that day. And we can find other ways in our community to do things like that. So, and I think that, I think everybody else mentioned everything. So I hope to see people this weekend in Long Branch. And I will now turn it over to Mr. Fox for his very first city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, members of the community. I just want to first start and just say thank you to staff. Service is a calling and what our staff do on each and every day for this community is more than a job. And I just want to just say thank you to them for their dedication to this organization and to the community each and every day. And it's paramount. And many of you have already said it, just looking at Ms. Doris Rogers, 50 years in this organization and what she has meant to this community. A side note, I would just say, Ms. Rogers, she grew up in Greensboro too. And she went to a Dudley High School down in Greensboro. And so it is such a joy that we can talk about Greensboro. So one of my former homes, I used to live. I also want to give a sort of COVID update, kind of where we are. And I will apologize in advance if my comments are a little long. I'm going to try to keep it short, brief and to the point moving forward. The COVID-19 dashboard continues to be updated with vaccination cases. The data provided by Montgomery County. We strongly encourage, as Councilmember Kostick did earlier, that all residents and employees, please get vaccinated. That is our best defense against COVID-19 and all the various variants that are out there. Montgomery County's transmission recently changed to an area from high transmission as defined by the CDC. So we must remain vigilant on masking indoors, working towards getting this community to 100% of the city population and being fully vaccinated with regular testing and all other preventative health measures. To make vaccination or testing appointments, you can call 240-777-2982 or you can visit the Montgomery County COVID-19 Information Portal. The Continuum Healthcare and Small Things Matter will be partnering with Giant Pharmacy to host a vaccination clinic at the Tacoma Park Community Center on September 25th. That is September 25th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, including booster shots for those who are immunocompromised. Since city facilities reopen to the public on August 23rd, we have taken several steps to ensure that safety of both our staff and visitors to the community center. Masks are mandated inside all facilities and buildings throughout the city with extra masks available at the reception desk for any residents who forget their mask. Common spaces are disinfected daily as part of our building cleaning schedules. New building ventilation system settings, ionization technology and antimicrobial filters have been implemented for air purification and circulation in facilities. Hand sanitizer is available at all entrances. All employees are now required to fill out a vaccine attestation form with a copy of their vaccination card attached. We've also enacted a citywide telework policy. This pandemic is still evolving each and every day and week that goes by. We ask that both staff and residents remain flexible as we continue to monitor the situation weekly with our state and county partners to keep our community safe and avoid further disruption of city services that Tacoma Park residents love and expect and depend on. All COVID-19 protocols will be subject to change with city managers' determination with and follow-up with state and health guidance. And the mayor has already addressed about council meetings remaining virtual and staff remains ready to continue to test our hybrid capabilities for when council, and there was a decision to go back to in-person meetings for council and other meetings throughout the city. The next topic I just want to touch on is we have an update that's the city council's recommendations for the Minor Master Plan Amendment. The plan boundary for Tacoma Park has been updated. The proposed plan boundary, as requested by the city Tacoma Park Resolution from July 7th, is included the area center as well as Tacoma Park Public Works Building Complex at 31 Oswego Avenue. Staff is scheduled to present the draft scope of work with the updated boundary to the planning board on September 30th. We'll also give council and community update on the Tacoma Junction. It is my understanding that the county planning board has this item on their agenda scheduled for next week on September 15th at 3:00 PM. This agenda will have two items in succession. The first item is the application for an extension on the project. And then the second is the project review. Is also, we received a letter, we posted to the website from SHA that SHA informed the applicant that they could not support the approval of the plan and in its current form. The next item I want to update is the Public Safety Task Force. Staff has received the task force's recommendations. Still reviewing recommendations and feedback from other departments. However, our police department and staff has reviewed the 50 recommendations. And there are a significant amount of recommendations that we're currently doing right now that is already underway. There's five recommendations that we need to have more conversation with council on implementation. And we foresee those discussions happening and some work sessions in the near future. Also, just want to touch base on stormwater. I've sent an email to council, but for those in the community to process for correcting your stormwater maps will now affect billing this year. The bill has already been submitted to the county as is. We encourage residents to continue to pay your bill on time when it is received. And staff has worked and submitted certain requests. We received at the end of August, I believe it was 47 requests has been received. And they've either been revised with no fee change, revised with a refund, revised with impurious, impervious area increase, or no corrections to those requests. I've also would like to just highlight, just a few highlights from the census of the data that we do know today. The city's population has increased by 914 people, which is 5.5% since 2010. And that's from 16,715 in 2010 to 17,629 in 2020. The city's population ranks 430th among census places in Maryland. In 2020, the city's largest racial ethnic groups were non-Hispanic white at 41.8%, black at 31.9%, Hispanic at 15.7% and multiracial at 11.2%. Residents with a race of other represented 8% of the population and Asian represented 4.6% of the population. Since 2010, the biggest increases in a city's population has come from multiracial residents, residents with a race of other and Hispanic residents. The city's population of black residents have declined since 2010 by 222 residents, which is 3.8% from 35% of the population in 2010 to 31.9% in 2020. Despite the city's increasing population, the city's housing stock has remained unchanged since 2010, decreasing by one unit from 7,162 to 7,161 units. The city's housing stock has also remained relatively unchanged since 1990, when there were 7,133 units in the city. And I'm not going to touch on ARPA in my comments because we have a work session. But I also would like to just touch on this month in September is National Suicide Prevention Month. We all need mental health support during times like these, particularly in this pandemic and circumstances that are seen and those that are unseen. It is never too late to help a loved one or a colleague that is going through this situation. So National Suicide Prevention Week started this past weekend and will go through this weekend. The World Suicide Prevention Day is this Friday, the 10th. The National Law Enforcement Suicide Prevention Awareness Day is the 26th of this month. And what we do know is, as it relates to our officers, 93 officers in 2021 have taken their lives. According to the World Health Organization, 700,000 people die by suicide on an annual basis. Those in the community who have a loved one or know others who are going through potential suicidal mental illness is encouraged to reach out and call the Suicide Prevention Line at 1-800-273-TALK. Or the, for those that are veterans in the community, there's a Veterans Crisis Line, 1-800-273-8255. Select option one. And there's also the Montgomery County Crisis Center that's there for assistance as well. And it's 240-777-4000. For those in the community that are looking for support or free classes for individuals or family members for individuals living with mental illness, you can always contact the National Alliance on Mental Health of Montgomery County, NAMI. And their number is 301-949-5852. With that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next, we have adoption of minutes. The city clerk circulated minutes from our council meetings on March 24th, April 7th, April 12th, April 14th, April 19th, April 26th and April 28th. Would someone like to move adoption of the minutes? Councilwoman Searcy moved. Councilwoman Kostick second. Any comments, changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote on adoption of the minutes?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Searcy? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Great. Now we will move into our work sessions and I'm going to turn it right back to our city manager to go through an update on the, so we claim ARP funding now versus ARPA. I kind of liked ARPA better than ARP.
It's, ARPA is, yeah, we're for, we'll be staying ARPA because it's the American Rescue Plan Act, so.
Okay.
So while the presentation is, is getting loaded, tonight, the team and I just wanted to just go through a presentation, just giving the highlights of where we started, where we are and where we see us going in preparation for recommendation from the team and I to council to further the conversation on how do we most effectively implement and execute on the American Rescue Plan Act funding in this community? If we just go to, thank you. So, so here, the biggest things that I just want to call out. As we all know, the bill was signed into law on the 11th of this year, about six months ago. And the city of Tacoma Park receives $17.4 million tranche through the state of Maryland because we are a non-entitlement city, which means any city under 50,000. We receive the first tranche, 8.7, on July 12th. And we'll receive the second tranche of funding a year from now, next year in 2022. We have until 2024 to encumber those funds with the opportunity, based off our understanding with the guidelines, which will give us at least to 2026, but they have to be encumbered as projects by 2024. And every year, including this year, we're getting ready to plan to start the mandatory reporting and compliance to the US Treasury. Next slide. So when we look at what can we use the funds for, it's really responding to COVID-19 pandemic. It's recovering costs incurred responding to the public health pandemic, replacing lost, delayed or decreased revenues in the organization, addressing community needs and those who are mostly impacted, whether that be residents, whether that be businesses, schools. It's, the guidelines are very clear of those populations that can be assisted. Or making investments, water, sewer, broadband or stormwater. Next slide. The, there's seven real expenditure categories. But for sake of the presentation and how we will be explaining to council and move forward, we put it in four real big buckets. The bucket is as related, the first bucket is really public health, economic impacts and disproportionately impacted communities is one bucket. Another bucket is premium pay for essential workers who work during the pandemic. The third bucket is how we'll describe it is infrastructure bucket, which will have your water, sewer, broadband. And then the fourth bucket would be those that are administrative, public sector revenue loss impacts that we've had to our budget. And when you look at most of this, so when we talk about vaccination programs, support to mental care, testing, tracing, public communication, community engagement efforts, as council has already appropriated funding July 28th at your council meeting, funding around that. When we talk about food assistance, rent or mortgage, utility assistance, council has already appropriated funding for some of that already. Loans or grants to mitigate financial hardships, aid to support businesses for reopening, drinking water projects, construction of treatment works, stormwater systems. So these are all the types of examples that the funding could be used for, as well as programs and jobs with schools, job training to accelerate rehiring or address unemployment due to the pandemic, helping with the community violence, community health workers. So those are all the different examples. So those are all the different examples that we're looking at as an organization and staff to help determine what we ought to be recommending to council. And before I go to the next slide, some of the administrative, that last bucket, when we look at revenue loss, some of the things we're looking at is mental health service and substance abuse disorder, build or upgrading some of our broadband connections, things of that sort. Next slide. This slide, just wanted to highlight what council has already done in July. You've already allocated two point two million in fiscal year twenty two, and currently, some of that rolls over into twenty three and out years for each of the funding uses from July. And some of these items are within the adopted budget, and some were budget amendments that was brought before council in July. So the remaining that we're talking about, the seventeen point four, that will be soliciting the community, soliciting the labor unions, staff, the senior leadership team, is going to be on that fourteen point two to see how should we, how should council allocate the remaining funding of the seventeen point four tranche of funding that we received? Next slide. So what we've looked at is, how are we going to prioritize this? What does this look like? So what we have been doing on staff is having conversation with regional jurisdiction partners, as well as national jurisdiction partners. There was a presentation by Mr. Chris Fabian with Resource X that presented to a lot of managers early in this year, and he provided this rendering that you see here, trying to break out short term versus long term in how councils and managers should be looking at the ARPA funding, and how do we get the biggest bang for our buck in leveraging the resources to help the community? So for us, when we look at, what are the goals that, with our prioritization that we're trying to prepare for council is, does the project or initiative meet the goals and priorities of council? Racial equity lens is used, and are we investing in disadvantaged communities? Are we stabilizing the organization? Are we growing local businesses? Are we encouraging financial sustainability? Does it align with existing city plans? And the biggest one is innovation is essential. Projects and initiatives must be transformative for the long term. So post the pandemic, where do we go as a community? And I'm going to talk about that in just a second. So when we look at the short term, tier one, two, and three is kind of where we've been as an organization in partnership with council over the last couple of months. Tier one, we're looking at one time support, direct support to those who are most vulnerable, and council, you've already appropriated funding in July to help the most vulnerable. Tier two is looking at how do we bridge ongoing revenue shortfalls that we have in our budget? Tier three is really looking at restoring funding programs that may have been cut previously in previous budgets. So right now, where we are as an organization is, right now in the short term, how do we get immediate relief to those in the community? How do we stabilize the organization to be able to to walk now but run faster later post pandemic? For the long term, what we're looking at is, how can we leverage funding from partner agencies? There's agencies within the region and others that receive bigger tranches of funding through the ARPA funding from the U.S. Treasury, and how do we leverage those to help those in the community? What tier five is, is where we're trying to look at innovation and resiliency for the community. And part of the resiliency that I'll talk about in just a second is, long term, becoming a resilient Tacoma Park. Some of that innovation and resiliency could be looking at, how do we fully operationalize racial equity in this organization and community? Not where we're, we're all playing by the same beat and tune, looking at economic prosperity moving forward. And as well as looking internally, there are a lot of IT-related platforms and softwares that we need to be able to invest in, to invest in our staff and future, to be able to meet the expectations that the council and the community has. So some of that is going to be looking at our ERP systems and do some migrations. It's going to mean looking at some of state-of-art technology to become a more learning organization that's data-driven for the council and community, as well as taking a hard look at some of our rebranding. This is the time, as we look at a rebirth with this tranche of funding from the federal government to be able to rebrand to who we will be in the future, long term. The next slide, please. So part of that long-term planning, when we look at tier four and five, as a staff, what we're trying to think through, as well as, how do we become a resilient Tacoma Park? And that's going to be looking at creating a plan that focuses on the five areas of community services, equity, economic development, sustainability, and climate change, as well as public safety. These five core areas are going to be areas that we're going to take a hard look at within our recommendations to council with that last set of funding later this fall and early next year as we move forward. Long term is really looking at, how do we fund city services and support the community more efficiently, more streamlined, more effectively? How do we redesign how we engage the community? Our community engagement efforts have to be different moving forward. We cannot continue to meet the community's need by doing the same thing that we've been doing in the past. We have to do it differently, and that's where we need the community at the table. Because what we're trying to make sure that, when we come out of this pandemic, this opportunity only comes once in a lifetime that we received with the ARPA funding. So we want to make sure that Tacoma Park continues to stay open, continue to stay welcoming as we are, because we want everyone to know that Tacoma Park is a city of opportunity for all, all walks of life in this community. With the mantra that you are seeing that we're putting out there as one city, one community, one Tacoma Park, and that is our goal moving forward. The last thing before I move forward about the implementation plan is, these five core core areas that we have outlined, if you look at your council priorities, they align very well with your council priorities and where we're trying to go, at least over the next year. Next slide. So when we look at the implementation plan, what have we completed? Current steps and next steps. I've already discussed council approval in July. The current steps where staff is currently right now is, we're actively recruiting our ARPA manager, which is very, very critical. That's a critical hire for this organization and community. That person is going to come in and help us shepherd us through the implementation plan and processes, as well as make sure that we stay compliant with the ARPA funding as relates to the U.S. Treasury. What we're doing is having discussions on our senior leadership team and getting information from the departments. We'll be hosting a department workshop with our senior leaders very soon on reviewing some of the expenditure requests from each of the departments. We'll be taking that expenditure request and plan to council at some time in the near future. And then, once we do all of that, the next step is really going to be considering what is eligible, identify and evaluate top priorities that council has for what is recommended from myself and our team, and then look at approving that use for funding as needed as we move along. Short term, within the next six months to year, and then a year to the next three years, implementing these funds. Next slide. I'd like to turn it over to our deputy city manager, who's Jessica Clark, who's going to talk to us about our Census Data Explorer tool.
All right, thanks, Jamal. Yeah, so another step that we're taking to prepare to administer ARPA and to develop our spending plan is to create a Census Data Explorer. So as council and hopefully most of the public know by now, our planning division makes census data available each year on our Tacoma Park demographic map, where you can see percentages for certain census variables by census tract overlaid on a map of our city with variables such as households below the poverty line. We really wanted to go farther and deeper with our census data. The last time the city was really able to take a comprehensive look at our census data was back in two thousand and seventeen with the Housing and Economic Development Data Analysis, and those census data trends informed our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan and other initiatives. But we're really due for an update, and so what we're working towards is making our census data available in real time, both for staff and the public. Census data was critical even before ARPA came along. It's critical to our budget planning, our programming, things like grant applications when we're advocating for resources for the city outside of our borders with the county, state, and federal government, as well as our racial equity considerations. So disaggregating census data by race and ethnicity is critical for advancing racial equity in the city. But for ARPA, it's going to be particularly critical because there are a lot of references in the interim final rule or the guidance from Treasury as to the recipients of ARPA funding have to demonstrate that the funding is serving the intended population, which is our most vulnerable residents. So the way that ARPA is written, it prioritizes residents living in qualified census tracts or census tracts with a large proportion of low-income residents. It also prioritizes areas where there were health disparities that existed before the pandemic that were then exacerbated during the pandemic, as well as pre-existing social vulnerabilities that were, again, exacerbated by the pandemic. So as you can see here, this, today, it's just a teaser for everyone this evening. We will put on the council agenda an actual work session where we'll have our public administration specialist, Dan Powers, who created this tool, come and show it to everyone and walk everyone through it, and around that time, we'll be making it available for public release. But for this evening, I just wanted to show you a couple of quick snapshots from the beta version of this webpage. It's interactive, very similar to the police department data release that we just did, that's now available on our website. But we're using the beta version in our senior leadership team workshop on ARPA planning. And as you can see here, the data explorer will include census data on demographics by race and ethnicity, but also on housing data, poverty, employment, and income levels in the city, education, health insurance, and computer access, and other data points. Next slide. So here are just two examples of some of the interactive visualizations. We have internet access by location, as well as housing cost burden by household income, and there'll be narrative text explaining each visualization. Next slide. And then, to complement that data explorer, we've also mapped the qualified census tracts, which will be useful when we do our ARPA reporting, as well as prior to ARPA, Dan Powers had also mapped our social vulnerability index in the city, and that was presented to council back in the fall, and that is already available on our website, and the social vulnerability, the CDC's social vulnerability index is referenced throughout the ARPA interim final rule. So all of these tools will be useful to us as we plan how to spend ARPA funding, as well as we do reporting to remain in compliance on our spending.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next slide, please. So council, community, what we're asking tonight is, if you have suggestions about ARPA spending, we have received some already, but we're asking everyone, email your ideas to us, please, arpa@tacoma park maryland.gov. We will be receiving those, our new ARPA manager will be receiving those, and those ideas will be discussed in our workshop as a senior leadership, and may make it into a lot of our recommendations to council later on. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'm turning it back over to you for any questions that you or council may have.
Great, thank you very much. I see Councilmember Smith has, already has his hand up, so I'll turn to him first.
Mr. Fox, Ms. Clark, thank you for the presentation. You know, my concern is trying to get this money out as soon as possible. First thing, I hope the report provided by the Presbyterians will be added to the record and be used as foundation to how we're going to move forward. I do appreciate the fact that you are soliciting an ARPA, I guess contractor or employee to manage the funds, but has anyone considered reaching out to Deloitte or McKinsey and seeing if they would be able to do the same thing in a much faster process than trying to hire a body and bring them into the city? I know New York is using Deloitte to actually answer their phones to get out emergency rental assistance. So using these big consulting firms is already being done across the country. One thing that wasn't in the presentation that I think that we have to consider is, if the House or and/or Senate changes in two thousand and twenty two, there is going to be a fight over these funds, and the Republicans are going to try to take back this money. So we need to get it out as soon as possible because I don't know if we're going to have three years to make all these improvements. But those are just some initial comments. I think that we need to really consider putting more money available, making more money available to Ms. Wiggins as soon as possible because I know that there are people that are on the verge of being evicted, or they have received an eviction notice, and I don't know if the capacity, the human capital that we have in the housing office is enough to help the residents that are in need. And I don't think that the pandemic is going to end anytime soon. There are already five other variants that are of interest that the WHO has said that there are, that are in America. So once Delta is done with us, it probably will be Lambda or Mu. So I just think that, you know, people are going to continue to hurt, and they're going to need us just to support them and their families.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar.
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute myself there. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. And I think I draw a distinction between longer term and shorter term kinds of expenditures, and I think that a lot of what was in the presentation makes sense for the longer term kinds of work that we would do. But I do also have concerns about the need for more immediate types of assistance, and in particular, you know, I did have a chance to be on a call with the group from the Presbyterian Church last night, and some of the statistics that they presented indicate that at least potentially that the level, the levels of eviction threat in Tacoma Park may exceed those elsewhere in the county. Now, what's not clear to me is the extent to which that could be due to the fact that we have on the whole higher levels of rental units and people living in rental here than we do elsewhere, and so it's not clear if it's beyond that or not. I do think, though, and maybe the city manager can say something about this, there was some information that I saw about what's happening specifically when the county is, learns of or becomes aware of the specific people who or becomes aware of the specific people who are facing eviction. And they're sometimes able to help them, and sometimes we are. And I wonder whether it would be possible for you to say a little bit about how that process is working, because I think that may seem like a bit of a bloodbath to, you know, some people who are in the community who are wondering about this. So if, can you share a little bit about how that is working? Or if there's someone else on staff, we should.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. I will ask Director Cross, welcome Director Cross. This is his first meeting as well as our Housing Community Development Director. And I will say before Director Cross speaks, we are partnering with neighboring jurisdictions in a county. And for most of the need that is in our community, for those who are on the cusp of evictions, we are partnering close. And in most of those cases, other resources are able to be able to be used. And our sources of funding that we have are usually coming at the last, the last funding stream. Director Cross, would you like to give a more robust response?
Thank you. And before I start, just like to introduce myself, my name is Alex Cross. I'm the new director of Housing and Community Development here in Tacoma Park. I look forward to working with all of you on the council. And just to echo the city manager's comments, HCD continues to work with our community partners and partner agencies around the region to assist those in need, in the low to moderate income households, particularly those who are in need of rental assistance. There are other, there are a lot of funding opportunities out there for folks who need assistance with rental payments. And the city manager said, we are, we focus on those who are on the cusp of being evicted. And we have partner agencies and community partners who let us know who they are and refer them to us. And as those referrals come in, we are, we analyze situation and we are dispersing the funds.
So, and thank you, Alex. I think we met once briefly the other day, and I know we're supposed to be talking sometime this week. And I apologize that all these kind of first or second or first more detailed interactions with everybody end up happening by Zoom. So I appreciate the information. So given what you've just described, do we think that there are eviction cases that aren't getting the attention either of the county or other local area organizations or the city? I mean, are some people just getting an eviction notice and just saying, okay, I'm leaving without understanding that they have the ability to contest it?
Well, the Housing Division and the Housing Manager, they have developed really strong working relationships with a lot of community organizations, community-facing organizations in the city. And we certainly hope that folks who are facing eviction do contact the community organizations, contact the county, and contact the city to understand all of their, the possibilities for avoiding eviction.
I guess what I'm wondering is, do we also get notified by the courts as cases come up? Or does the county at least get notified?
Yes, and we work closely with the county, and they provide us that information as well.
So the other thing that we heard about from in the Presbyterian Church's committee presentation and the call last night, and I think it's in the material that they submitted in writing as well, is that the forms that have to be filled out for applying for some of the benefits, I think it's our forms, I think it's the county forms, are quite complicated. And it can sometimes take somebody who works at a local nonprofit a long time to assist someone, and they may only be able to fill out, you know, three or four forms a day that is that complicated. And of course, there's language barrier issues too for those, in many cases, for those residents who are facing some challenges and they have to turn to other people. So even when they turn to other people who are more familiar with doing this, it could take that long. So I guess if, what I want to say is, if we're going to have similar kinds of things, it's vital that we not have long, complicated forms of processes. So I'm going to say that. And I do think, I mean, I'd like to get the staff to look at that data that was presented about the percentage of people here in the, in the cities that are facing eviction. If that's actually true, then we may need to get more money out than we currently have allocated. And so I'm, I don't feel like I know enough at this point, but I, I don't want us to just say we're not going to spend anything more than the, or allocate anything more than the $500,000 that we've allocated so far until another six months goes by. So to me, trying to get additional assistance out, if we can see, assess what the need is, I think would be really important. And I'll stop there for the moment there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Next, we have Councilwoman Circe.
Great. Thank you so much for this presentation. It's been really helpful. So one of the questions I have is about that administrative category. Everything that I am reading is more, you can use the funds for the purpose of setting yourself right as a result of the costs that you incurred responding to the pandemic prior to the dollars being made available. You can provide payroll and support for those, you know, employees that are, you know, first responders or whatnot and direct connection to the COVID response. And then it seems like administrative charges are related to implementation of programs specifically. And what I'm seeing is a lot of, or what I was hearing, and I may be completely misinterpreting the intent, is a lot of discussion around addressing administrative functions and less about the establishment of specific programs. Because it seems in some of the language that we not only need to report on what programs we're performing, what the costs are associated with those programs, but also programmatic data. And even for infrastructure projects, it would be programmatic data that would show the results of what you've implemented. And so I, I'm trying to wrap my head around, because I know we have to start somewhere, right? And I know that what we're talking about right now is starting. But what I'm trying to, in my mind, get my head wrapped around how we will get to the point where we're actually talking about programs designed to address people in need in the community and what those look like. So I, I'm trying to wrap my head around timing. I'm trying to wrap my head around direct service programs, because I think that was the, I feel pretty confident that that's the intent of the dollars. So can you, can you talk a little bit about the expected timeline of when we may get to a point where we're actually talking about, here's our food non-profit incubator program. Here is our program, workforce development program designed to lift residents in the community to X, Y, Z type of employment opportunities. When will we get to that point where we can kind of talk about that? And if you could also address whether or not all of the administrative functions that we're talking about right now relate to the ultimate implementation of these programs that we would need to establish under, under ARPA or ARPA, whatever you want to call it?
Thank you, Councilmember Circe. I'll start with the latter. Yes, everything that I discussed tonight will go to the ultimate implementation of what we will recommend to council. There, as I shared tonight, what we plan on doing is receiving on the feedback through ARPA@tacoma park M D dot gov, having our workshop with our senior leadership, getting feedback from staff, and building out what those programs are. And so when you, when you discuss about administrative, and so administrative are looking at those expenses that are tied to those programs, the data analysis to those programs, as well as under administrative guidance as estates transfers to other units of government. And so if we proposed providing funding, let's say, to the school district or the county, or any other non-entitlement unit. So if we were partnering, leveraging funds with other cities as well, or smaller communities, you'd be able to use those funds for that as well. But at the end of the day, where we are in the process, it's, we're still early. We're trying to get the ARPA manager, which is a critical hire as a stated tonight, get that person on board to help us shepherd us through, to make sure that we are compliant. We go through our first compliant in October next month, on the 29th, and getting that process through. And then we'll be bringing something back to council. I don't have a timeline tonight and don't, don't want to box myself in to say that it's gonna, I'm gonna bring it back next month on the 15th, knowing that I won't be able to meet that expectation. I would say right now, what we have planned is continue to work with you and your colleagues through this fall, and hopefully to have something as we roll into January is the goal. We want to be methodical and get the dollars out to the community. Yes, that is our top goal and priority, as well as also looking long-term. Because this once-in-a-chance lifetime funds, we want to make sure that when we come out of this pandemic, that we're able to click on all cylinders and we're able to provide the same service level or increase that service level to the community that you and your colleagues expect.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree. But I do share a very real concern, as Councilmember Smith has shared. Typically, Congress is really good about giving folks a lot of money. And then they come back and they regulate the heck out of that money. And if you don't spend it in the way in which they intend it, it gets snatched right back. So, you know, I, I think it's important for us as we're thinking through what types of programs, how to think through and talk about what we're using these dollars for. We really stick to the original intent and the use of the dollars, which is around program development to address underserved communities that have been negatively impacted as a result of the pandemic. And we may have a whole slew of other things as a city that we need to do or want to do. And there may be opportunities through, you know, taking that portion of the first tranche that we, that related to costs that we incurred as a result of the pandemic that we've been reimbursed for, that we can now move into something like a general fund and decide when our budget process on how we want to allocate those to things that may not be, you know, typically considered as part of ARPA. But I, I think that that's something that's really important. And I agree, that ARPA manager will have the program and the funding requirements at the forefront of their minds, which is really important. But I think that's the piece that we need to make sure that we're keeping in mind as we're going forward. Because what I would hate for us to do, spend the money, which makes perfect sense for us to do, to make some of the infrastructural changes that we desperately need, true indeed, but don't provide those direct service. And then some auditor comes along a year, two, three, four years later and say, you didn't use these dollars for program implementation, we want it back. So that's something that I would definitely encourage and really look through those administrative items that we tap thus far to make sure that they, there's a clear linkage to program implementation down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Circe. I just want to say that what we are, we are checking at guidance. And as you know, the guidance has shifted. It seemed like every day or every week, there's something new. So we're constantly working with our finance team and city management just to make sure that we're, we're in the know and up to speed on what we can use the funds for. And anything that we recommend to you and your colleagues will be carefully thought through with that in mind.
Great. Thank you so much, and welcome aboard.
Great. Next, Councilwoman DiBala.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very helpful. The, the main thing I had written down before the meeting was to talk up for you to talk about the data, how you define vulnerability, how you're going to reach them, and you hit that. So that's great. I think it makes sense to be wise and strategic in our long-term, in our, in our spending of this money for a long-term impact. So for me, yes, immediate needs and ways that are long-term to help those groups, which may mean a citywide spending, it may mean administrative bucking up, it may mean more investment in community engagement to get people to the table, to get people in the room so you can find them and give them the assistance. That all makes sense to me. I, I wonder if you and Director Cross can spend a little more time with staff thinking about how to monitor the immediate needs as we go forward. So, so we heard in July that, that we might need some eviction money over the summer. So we did that. So can we, can we keep track of that while we're doing the other stuff? And have you come back to us every now and then and say, you know, yeah, yeah, we're, we're doing, we're meeting the needs, or we, there's these gaps over here that we didn't foresee? That, that might be something to add to the, not that you need more work, but that might help to address this, this sense that we all have, that we really want to do something yesterday to help people. And I, and I did really like the, the focus on engagement and connection. Because again, if you can't reach out to them, that, you, you can't, you can leverage everybody else's money, but first you have to find the people who need the help and they have to trust you. So that, that's really important to me. The, the other thing is, I think I didn't hear, maybe I did, the word housing. So when you all talked about community services, I was assuming that that included, included, again, longer-term housing issues, not just the immediate, oh, wait, I, I'm paying my rent, so I can't pay my utilities, which is very important, but the, but the longer-term housing piece also. And I guess that's it for me. I really look forward to working with you all on this. And I, and if I heard you correctly about January, I would really hope we could do some, some more of this sooner. Thank you.
And if I can, Madam Mayor. Councilmember DiBala, yes, the community services is inclusive of housing. I did not state everything that's in there. But when we look at community services, it's anything in the organization that is public-facing. So library, rec, housing are some of the areas that we're, we're talking about. And then public safety is looking at some of the public works and police. So it's, so that's how we're looking at it.
That helps. Thank you.
Great. Next, we have Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you very much for the presentation. A number of my questions have already been answered. So I don't have a lot of in-depth questions at this point, but I just kind of want to reiterate the point that I think I've heard from residents and a number of other council members, which is just sort of this tension between the long-term planning and the urgency of the need and trying to balance those two things. And, and to me, that seems like the key where I, I really want to see this long-term approach. And as you said, make sure that we're setting ourselves up for long-term success and doing this methodically and in a way that will set up programs and initiatives that will have kind of a long-term impact, not just the critical need. But I also want to make sure that we're addressing the critical need and that we're set up to be able to do that. So I think as much as possible as we move forward, if we can just get some updates on how the critical needs are being addressed kind of in the short term, that might be helpful as well. And, and then if it takes a little longer to kind of implement those longer-term things, to me, it makes sense to really spend the time that's necessary on that as well. And then the other thing that I was thinking as we were talking was just about the balance of who provides the services and the assistance. And we do have such a small city staff. And as much as possible, I know we've talked before about leveraging relationships with other nonprofits and other agencies at the county level, but just trying to make sure that we are able to get the assistance out. That also requires obviously the staff members or the connections to do so. So I think that will be important as well. But looking forward to hearing more in the future on this as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Fox, thank you for this plan and the presentation tonight. I appreciate all the work that you've put into that. I appreciate all the work that you've put into that. My questions are way down from the plan. It's, number one, the, you know, our fear of evictions is, I think, real. And I know in the past, we've told the apartment owners and managers that we want them to notify us before the eviction plans are implemented and go forward, you know, before it gets to court so that if there's anything we can do to help stop that, it would be good. And I wonder if this isn't the right time to send a reminder letter to all of the apartment managers that they should be letting us know that if any, of any pending evictions so that we can see if there's a way for us to intervene. And, and then along the same lines, I, you know, I think we need to reach out to everyone in the community to find out what the, what, where there is need. And I think an article in the newsletter is probably the best way to do that. It might not be foolproof, but at least it gets us moving in the right direction. It would be nice if, again, in the letter to the managers about evictions, if we asked them to post notices in their buildings, which would help to reach some of the tenants, but, you know, find out if people are suffering from lack of food or, or, you know, utility problems, you know, what, whatever the case may be so that they know that there may be a resource here that, that can help them through that difficult time. And that's all I, I wanted to say about it at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar, are you going back for a second round?
Well, you didn't have a chance to say anything yet, so.
Go ahead. You can go first and then I'll close out and then we can move on.
Well, just a couple, two other thoughts. One, the city manager, you mentioned soliciting the public's opinion, which I, which I think is crucial. And I guess one of the questions I have is whether it may not be possible in the current COVID environment for us. I mean, I, I think if times were different, we have some sort of public forum or more than one in different parts of, of the city to do that. That's obviously very challenging, but figuring out some way to go beyond where we are now, which is that people should send in ideas and certainly I'll solicit that as well from people. The other thing is that I really do think, and I don't know what my colleagues think, but I'll just say that I think is we ought to take some amount of the, so it was a seven, seven million plus tranche that we received so far and of that, a little bit over a million, I believe, has been allocated for, all over two million has been allocated for, for the various purposes that we've already discussed, leaving something like $5 million just of the first tranche. So there's still a lot of money. And I agree to the degree that we can use that going forward for things like maybe merging with some of the recommendations from the task force, addressing some of the deeper equity issues that we face. That all makes sense. I, I just think, to me, I'd like to say, okay, but we're going to take X percent of the $5 million or whatever it is, if I got the number right, and we're going to say that is money that we're going to try to use for more immediate needs. And, and to me, you know, with not only the eviction and the food issues that we've talked about, but utilities were mentioned, of course, but also just for a lot of people who've lost their jobs, they, they don't have unemployment benefits anymore in many cases. And you're talking about a lot of immigrants who are understandably, in some cases, scared to come forward. Maybe they have documentation issues, maybe they don't. So I feel better if we sort of had two tracks and one track could sort of augment the $500,000 that we've already set aside for eviction issues and nutrition and food issues, and that could be sitting there for more immediate kinds of issuance, potentially to people based on their income status or something along those lines, while we also do the, do the longer-term. So I think to me, that's, that's how we ought to proceed, is draw, is divide it up in that way. And I urge that we move forward on, on that approach.
As my colleagues are going around for round two, I am going to jump in and make my own points. First one, just to build on what Councilmember Kovar just said, at first, thank you for this. It was, it was a great presentation. I think under immediate needs, I'd like to, for us to also think of urgent needs and to look back at the lessons that we learned over the last 18 months. And one of those was the fact that as a city, we were able to respond much faster than the county and the state to the needs of our residents, particularly through our mini-grant program for our small businesses. So we were able to set that up within the first month of COVID and provide our small businesses with, you know, grants of just a couple hundred dollars, few thousand dollars. And what that helped them do, the near, the over 100 businesses that we helped was build a bridge until they could access the county money and the state and federal dollars. So one of the things, as we're hearing from some of the organizations in our community, that their money is getting cut from the county. What they're seeing right now is their funding is being cut. And is there a way as we're looking at, as you said, the immediate need in the real short-term, urgent need, as you're doing all this, this fall, to figure out how we can get a pot of money like we did in the first few days of COVID so that we're getting money to these groups that may need them urgently because they're seeing their dollars being cut from other places. And many of these groups are ones that we've already partnered with in the city. You know, I know a number of the groups that deal with hunger issues and food insecurity. PTAs are battling right now with, you know, the, the Board of Ed to do things. And so there may be some ways we could partner with them. But I'd like us to think about urgent needs and how we can, you know, take those lessons we learned in the first few days of COVID and what, how we were successful in helping residents and then look at immediate needs. And so are there ways to get money out the door quickly to make sure that these organizations are able to continue to do the work that they're doing? That's the first point. The second point is I think we need to make a distinction between eviction and delinquency. They're two different things. We get, and I asked Mr. Cross to correct me if I'm wrong here, but my understanding from staff and from the county is that we are given information regarding evictions from the county so that we can help and identify people and make sure that we are, people are avoiding evictions. That's different than delinquency. And delinquency is happening, so people are getting behind in their rent because it was very confusing and because the county programs regarding rental assistance required that you were actually delinquent and behind in your rent before the county provided you assistance. So there are some people who have gotten behind and I'm not sure where that information may be, that that might be an area that we need to be looking at. So I think if we're, I know as we're having this conversation, we should draw a distinction between evictions and delinquencies. And I do think delinquencies are a real issue because once you get behind, it's really hard to make that up long-term. And I think that might be a place where we look to our partners in the city and some ways that we can help people dig out if they did get behind. And that leads to my third point, which is knowing that we do have, like this does take a lot of staff intensive time to do this work. And one of the lessons that we've learned from the early days of COVID was, you know, making sure we had good partners like the Latino Economic Development Center. As Councilmember Kovar said, some of these forms that the county has can, and the state have can be very hard to follow and providing people with and partnering with groups to help residents, I think is important. One of the ideas that the council had back last winter when we set up our priorities was looking at a navigator program to identify the need in the community. And again, I think this goes back to the difference between evictions and delinquencies because I'm not sure delinquencies is being picked up enough. But if we had a navigator program that were out there connecting with residents, I think we would be able to track and connect people to services more quickly. In addition, in terms of public input, I think we need to think carefully about how we're gaining public input. I, I actually have concerns about putting things out, asking people to provide input because I'm, I'm more concerned that we're going to hear from people who may not need the assistance. And we need to hear from the people who are actually needing our assistance in the different ways they may need that at this time. And so again, I go back to the idea that we had explored last winter in navigator program. So that's the third point. The fourth is, and this you can answer later, I do think there are opportunities, and I had passed on a potential pilot project to you all. I know you have a ton of things to review from George Washington University. I'm looking at providing a pilot on guaranteed income for single mothers and just trying to follow up on whether or not that might be viable. I do think there are a number of groups out there looking to, to partner with cities of our size and that one in particular looked, I think it would be very helpful because it was looking at helping single moms, particularly with daycare. And then the final thing is last, what was it, last, late spring, early summer, the Deputy City Manager put together an excellent report on where we were with COVID relief. And it, it kind of documented the programs we had, the money that went out. It was an incredibly useful document that we were able to use at the county to advocate and lobby for assistance in the community. It provided a great sort of synopsis that we could, you know, talk to residents about. It was, so I think the, the format and everything worked well and I, I just dusted it off the other day. It's not that old, but it seems that old. But I, I just think that might be a good thing to kind of like update. So those are my five points. Think about the urgent needs, eviction versus delinquency, how we can really staff up, partner, some of the opportunities that are there out there for pilot projects and updating that report. And again, I just want to thank you so much for the work that's been done to date on this. And I'm really looking forward to the, the use of the census data to map all this. I, let's see, Councilmember Kovar, your hand is still up? Is that old? Okay. And then Councilmember Smith.
Well, I, I would like to thank Councilmember Kovar for his comments about the urgency of the need. I would like to put a dollar amount that council should consider in staff, an additional $750,000 to go to the Housing and Community Development Office so that we can start addressing some of these issues. And yes, evictions and being behind on your rent are two different things. An eviction is an actual legal process, but sometimes people just, once they get a notice from their landlord that they want them out, they do leave, but usually you go before a judge to be evicted from your property. But there are, I think, a lot of people that are behind in their rent that we are not picking up in any of the data that we are seeing.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm seeing no other hands on this. I don't know if the city manager, deputy city manager, or Director Cross, do you have any other questions, anything else you need from us tonight?
I, I would say not speaking for Ms. Clark or Director Cross, but we appreciate the feedback that council provided to us. I, I believe you gave us 10 pages tonight for us to really think about. And we look forward to coming back to you as we flesh our plan out a little bit more.
Great. I tried to number mine at least. All right. We will move on to our next work session. Oh, and this is, I get to turn it over now to our subcommittee, Councilwomen Dibala, Kostic, and Sears to continue our discussion of committees and we are joined by our city attorney. So take it away.
So no slides tonight. Tonight, we want to do two things. We want to review the code changes page by page as we often do with a massive package of code changes. And I'll set the stage for that briefly just before we do that. And then second agenda item to separately consider a proposed task force on sustainable investment that would also address some of the code issues that have arisen around the nuclear free ordinance. So first, I do want to note that we are really close to our goal. We had set this as a priority quite some time ago. There's been a lot to do. There was a survey of committee members to identify issues, a city staff work group. The mayor met with each work group last, with each committee last summer, summer a year ago. There have been many work sessions on different aspects of this. We've adopted a code of conduct. We've agreed on a bunch of administrative changes, new orientation and training, a new approach to recruiting, which we're in the middle of, review of each individual committee against a set of common purposes and a set of common criteria for what we're looking for these days. And now we here are at the code change stage that implements a lot of these things. So I'm really pleased and thank you to the work group for moving us towards our priority for a more effective and equitable committee system and that would be complemented by other ways of community engagement. As we've learned over the last few years, there's so many other ways to reach out and to hear back. And I do want to stress the council role in recruitment. We all forgot to mention it in our council comments that the month of September, the city is recruiting for nine commissions, boards, and committees. There's a webpage that goes into the details and then in October, the city council will be making appointments. So to briefly summarize and update our code recommendations before I turn it over to my colleagues, council member Sears and Kostic to do the line-by-line, we have two kinds of groups. We have the commissions and boards that have specific regulatory functions and we have the advisory committees that have a broader palette, less regulatory, and we are treating them in these proposed code changes somewhat differently. So we are looking at common, common purposes, particularly for advisory committees, fewer groups, more consistency, and hopefully as a result of all that, more council focus on the work that these volunteer groups do. I'm worried about the Nuclear Free Committee, which we talked about in July. We met with, the subgroup met with them in August and thank you to the mayor for encouraging us to reconsider some of our recommendations. The group stressed the sustainable investments aspect of their work and the, in their, their sense of their, of the importance of advocacy on this issue. We are recommending at this point that we, that like with the noise, noise control board, we, we retain the group for now pending outside review. We not add members at this time like the noise board. In the case of the noise board, you may recall, we were looking to the task force and the, and the discussion about public safety to inform the purposes and the, and the, and the function of the noise board. And in this case, we would be looking to the proposed task force to coordinate amongst the climate, the sustainability, and the nuclear free goals that the city has. So with that, we will walk through the line by line on code changes and then we'll turn to the task force. And I think that Councilmember Sears is going to work the screen and also to start us off. So we will literally page, page through, identify places where identify places where there are changes. Yellow highlights are the things that we discussed in, in July that are either changed or unresolved. Um, and underlining is just that, changes that have been in there since we first got a draft. Um, so with that, I'll stop and let um council member Cerci.
So I just want to identify that council member Kovar, you have your hand up. Is that an old hand or a new one? Adult. Okay, good. We are starting with the clean slate. Oh, it is new. Sorry, it is new.
I, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to um respond to council member Dibala and say, first of all, for the whole um working group that I really appreciate the uh kind of reopening and, and, and holding on for making a final decision for now on the nuclear free committee. I thought that was uh, an approach that made sense and, and I liked the idea of the task force. I was, I was one of the members, council members who was talking about that. So I think that's a good spot for us to begin. And the only, a, a few um minor points I'll have as we go through line by line. But the one other sort of broader thing I just wanted to flag, and then when we get to, we can talk about in more detail. But just so people aren't curious, when we get there, um, we've agreed to phase out, and I mentioned this to several people electronically, we've agreed to phase out the facade advisory board or, or eliminate it. At the moment, we also are proposing in this version of the code amendments to strike all the city codes relevant to their work. I agree that we should get rid of those that are specific to the committee. I'm reluctant right now without studying it up a little bit more and, and hearing more separately, not, not tonight, I don't think from the city uh attorney. If there are some of the uh enforcement tools we may want to retain there. So I'm asking at a minimum that we kind of agree that we could keep that open and then make a decision on that before the, we get to the voting uh two, three or so weeks later on. So I'm just going to stick an, an O R in on that one and hope that we can agree that that requires a little more of our attention uh passed tonight. Thank you.
Council member Cerci, are you able to share your screen?
I am going to try, but it's, uh, right now my Zoom is revolting and will not allow me to watch my camera.
Well, so who else? I can do it if, if needed as well. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure I have the Word document in front of me though.
I don't know if um, if the city clerk can pull it up quickly or the mayor. I know I can't do it. That's why we had the difference.
I can probably do it. Um.
For, for those of you uh who have the packet, um, if you have your own computer open, it's the cover sheet is followed by all of the code changes. Not as a separate document, but just write in there, just all one file.
I can, I can um, hold on, I can pull it up. I can do it.
I just resend the most recent Word version.
That's easier than trying to use the version.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We're gonna get there.
Um, I need to be given sharing. Um, screen share, sorry. Oh God, this is gonna take, um. Okay, I don't have, um, whatchamacallit.
Maybe we should have stuck with the slides. We knew how to do that.
Good to see Clark or someone can give me um permission to share my screen. Okay, I think I have it now. I'll make it bigger.
And so while we're doing that, let me just say briefly that you have seen you, city council, except for the stuff in yellow, you have seen all of this in the summer. Um, and we did discuss a number of things already, but this is, this is the chance to, to go through um, and, and get any clarifying questions that you might, that you might still have.
Okay. I have a question on page six. Does anyone have anything before page six? I'm not seeing any hands or anything. I think this is just a question for the city attorney. On page six, I'll get there in a second. On line 14, that's subsection A. This one, um, here, I'll pull it up. Could we just, could you just walk me through what this is? What we're doing here.
Mayor. Yes, so, so the goal was to, the goal is to create staggered terms. Um. The problem is, is that there are scenarios in which we have an odd number of, if there is a problem, that we have an odd number of appointees. Uh, and so uh, we wanted to make sure that it was, attempt to make sure that it was clear uh how the odd appointee, which term the odd appointee would be appointed to. Um, and the goal is, and it, it may not be as clear as it should be, and we can work on that. The goal is to have the, you know, for example, if you had um uh, seven members, three would be appointed for the first half of the terms, three would be appointed for the second uh term, set of terms, and then the, the last one would be, the seventh member would be appointed for um, the longer uh set of terms in order to have, build more um situational awareness and develop more of an institutional knowledge about how the committee functioned. Uh, so to have more members in the longer set of terms. That's, that's the goal there. If it needs to be more clear, we can continue to work on it if, if you don't, if council doesn't think it matters. Yeah.
And this, and this only really pertains to right now as we're making these changes.
Yes.
Right. All right. So as long as you understand it and the city clerk and everybody who's doing this understands it, and it only pertains to right now, I'm fine with the language. I just, I didn't want us to have something in here that in five or seven years, when none of us are around or, or fewer, remember um having that conversation. But I, I think if it's, if it's pertaining to the shift, the change we're making now and you and others who are um recruiting understand it, then I'm fine with it. So.
We'll look at it again though, mayor.
Okay. Um, I might have been late too when I was reading this.
Might have been late when we were writing.
Great. All right, um, if it's okay with councilwoman Dibala, I'm just going to keep going. Is that?
Sure. I want to point out one thing that, that you, you did go by. Um, we had talked early on about having the recreation committee um have an expanded name to reflect the, the expanded role that they've been doing for many years in terms of community outreach and engagement and events. And they met in the summer and they picked Recreation and Community Engagement Committee. So you'll see that in yellow because that's a new development and one that they have recommended. That, that's it.
All right, um, so then moving along, I will keep scrolling down. My next question slash comment is on page 14.
Uh, mayor, on page nine, um, this is here.
Okay, do you know what line on page nine?
Uh, keep going a little bit further uh to line 32. And so um, as I understand it, and maybe the city uh attorney can clarify this, we are the stormwater board. It's a, the, the council resolves itself into the stormwater board. And I think that there's a separate part of the code where that appears. Um, but I just want to make sure, is this just a cleanup because that appears elsewhere and we don't need to have it here? Or is is this actually some change being made to the stormwater board?
Same applies to the tree commission. Go ahead. Sorry.
Um, with respect to council member Kovar's specific question, uh, the stormwater board is, is designated in the charter and it's again referred to. Uh, and I don't have the exact site in front of me. Uh, it's again referred to in the um stormwater management section and defined therein. But because it's in the charter, uh, it's totally unnecessary for it to be here. And if you'll see, if you, if you read this portion closely, it basically, the portion of the code that's being taken out right here, it refers to the other portions of, of, of the city charter and code. Um, actually, I know it refers to the city code. I want to make sure that I'm not saying the charter incorrectly, but um in any event.
Another part of the code, I think in.
It's, it's in the charter, which is, which would be controlling anyway, even if it's not in the code. So um, I can give you the precise site to the section of the charter because somebody asked this recently and I had to go back and look it up.
You can do that later. I just, but there's no particular relevance to it being adjacent to where the um tree commission language was, right? That's, it's really not even specifically relevant to that, I guess, right? Is that, is that correct?
Uh, there is no connection uh in terms of the placement. No.
And by getting, by this, striking this language, we're not in any way inadvertently weakening our role as a stormwater board. Is that a fair statement?
That is entirely accurate.
All right, thanks. I just, that was brought to my attention and I didn't have a chance to reach out to you prior to the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Um, anything before page 14? Seeing nothing. I just had a very small change on line six. Um, we, it, the word commission should just, I think, be changed to committee. On page 14, I think we had changed all the other ones.
Thank you.
See, I do, I do read. Um, all right, next up, anyone have anything before page 17? Seeing nothing. I had a question on page 17. Oops. Yeah, page 17. This is on um where we talk about, it's line 14. And we're talking about uh Sustainable Maryland. Uh, here it is. Identify projects that meet the city's interests and needs for Sustainable Maryland and work with city council and city staff to develop develop recommendations. I guess my question is, do we need to define or, or, or reference what Sustainable Maryland is someplace? Here, or in the code? It's more, it's just a question.
It, it may be helpful and, and I'm, I'm happy to work on that.
Okay. All right. Then moving down. My next question's on page 22. Anyone have anything before 22? Seeing no other questions, I'll go to question, uh, page 42. The question I had was line um 38 on page 22. Wait, is it 38? Wait. Well, that's interesting. Now this is, looks different than my copy. I don't know why.
I hope you have the right version.
I know. Um.
This page 22.
Yeah. Oh, maybe it's just the paging got. It's here. Um, sorry, it's, it looks like it's in the next section here. Um, where it says the committee may review any work within the city which it has reason to believe is not in compliance with and has this section of this act. I guess I had a question of like, what section are we now referring to? Like, I was starting to get confused when we got to the three committee and when we started referencing section 14.04 point oh four oh. It's in a couple of places.
Right, mayor. So we need to clean that up. And, and I would tell you, this was a, this was a very late change prior to this coming out and, and I appreciate you pointing that out. And clearly we need to, if we're going to keep this portion, article eight in, in this section, we need to adjust the language to make sure, sure it flows better. That's, that's what you're getting at, correct?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just didn't, yeah, okay. All right, um. Just checking in. Does anybody have? I think my next thing isn't until page, I guess page 47, which actually goes to this other what we're doing with the um nuclear free stuff. But um, does anybody have anything before page 47?
I had a couple of questions and I'm, and I'm sorry, I, it's hard to catch it on the, on the page numbers. So it was just two questions. One related to the personnel appeals board, and maybe we didn't get there yet. And one relates to the ethics commission. So, and I'm, I'm just not able to tell whether we've gone to them yet or not. I apologize for that.
I think we.
I don't believe you have.
Okay, sorry about that, mayor.
Um, let's see if I can search.
If you haven't gotten it yet, it's okay.
Yeah, but I
Ethics should be about page 27 if we're on, if we've got the same page numbers, mayor. And then uh personnel appeal board is shortly after that.
Right, so do ethics first, okay. Yeah.
I have it as 27 would be where, okay, there you go.
Oh, yeah. So one, so one of the questions was, it says something in here a little further down about how they're supposed to um, publicize some information, oh, took lines 23 and 24, to conduct a public information program regarding the purposes and application of this chapter. So I know, I don't think that has really happened too much in my experience and maybe we haven't asked them for it. Um, but I, I'm, I'm wondering whether, I, I would say most people in, in the city probably don't know we have an ethics commission or what they do. I think it's an important thing to have, but I, again, we don't have to answer it tonight, but I'm, I'm just wondering, is that something we want them to do and do more, or do we not need it, or is it required to happen under state ethics requirements? So I just haven't focused on that before.
So, so I appreciate that comment. And, and one of the things that um the working group is tired of me hearing, is, or tired of hearing me say, excuse me, is that with respect to the quasi judicial uh code language, um, in particular, the ethics uh code language, every change we make in there has to be done with an idea of how it's going to affect uh the end process of the body and what it's assigned to do. It gets more complicated with the ethics uh commission language because every change we make has to be approved by the state ethics committee. So my suggestion to, and, and council member Kovar, I know you're sensitive to this because of some of the other things that um we've been working on, but the um my suggestions with, with the quasi judicial bodies is we look at them one at a time from top to bottom so that we avoid unintended consequences um as we go through some of these issues with the, the global change. Because we're finding as we start to pick at certain threads, uh, we're creating more problems than we have the capacity to deal with at the particular moment. So I, I would leave that into that category of issues to address at a future date. But it's, it's a, that doesn't take away anything from the validity of the point.
Anything else, council member Kovar?
And then the appeal, the um, sorry, the personnel appeal board, I had a question about too. And I'm not sure, oh, there. So it, it looks as if because we're getting rid of the personnel appeal board, but we're keeping all the rest of it. So the various appeals rise to the level of the city manager and then says the city manager has the final say in effect, and previously I think it, maybe then if you were unhappy with that, you could go to the personal field board. Is there any other process after that? So in other words, if, if an employee um, has a concern, is unhappy with what the city manager has decided, um, can they, does that relate to what the union agreement is? Does that, can they go to court? What, what's the? I'm asking for a change. I'm just trying to understand.
Sure. And, and it's, and it's a good point as well. Um, and the uh collective bargaining agreements uh create a parallel track, if you will, that provides for various forms of steps through the grievance uh and, and, and the employee can uh with the counsel. with the consultation of the union representative, choose one track or the other.
But a non-union worker doesn't have that, right? So.
That is correct. But there's, there are, as I understand it, and I'd have to get the exact specific breakdown from the city manager, very few employees who do not fall into that category that would not otherwise you, you start to get it. There's also a senior executive category that essentially serves at the will of the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any, so anything else before page forty-seven or the chapter on the nuclear free zone? All right, not seeing anything. I will stop there. I guess I had two questions. So is this staying in now under the recommendation from the Subcommittee? Yes, this stays in.
Assuming, assuming that we have the task force to address some of the issues, yes.
Okay. Cool. I just wanted to.
Let me rephrase that. The Nuclear Free Zone Act stays.
Okay.
Nobody's proposing to change any policy related to the Nuclear Free Zone Act.
Right. And that's what this chapter is.
And that's this chapter, the part about the committee. That's the tied to the task force.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. Can I ask, though, as we're cleaning up stuff, that we take out references to citizens and put residents? In this, as, as we've done other times, we're kind of cleaning up code stuff.
Thank you.
It's just a couple of places. That is all I had. Does anyone else have anything? Else?
I'll just mention again, the, the SAD Advisory Board section, it's a lengthy section. And like I was saying, and I'm sorry, I didn't know which, whether that came in the pages prior to or after the nuclear free. It's a lengthy section. There's a lot in there. And like I was mentioning, I sort of see four parts to it. There's the parts that relate just to the SAD Advisory Board itself, its memberships and its meetings and so on. That should clearly be struck. There is the parts that relate exclusively to what the County Historical Preservation Commission, we've all agreed, will take on. And so I don't think we need those parts. But then there's other elements relating to certain types of maintenance that's required, at least in the affected parts of the city. And I think we had an example where the requirements in here did end up calling for the screening of a dumpster that was placed somewhere. And it may be that those things appear elsewhere in the code. Or it may be that the county would handle enforcement of some of those things. But my impression is there might be some things specifically as it relates, as it relates to where residential and commercial areas meet. And that is one of our components of our council priorities. I don't want to, in effect, give away, and I, I don't think anyone is meaning it that way, but give away any tools that could be useful in that without understanding what we've got. So again, my request or appeal would just be that we agree to take a deeper dive into that area prior to the two to three weeks away from now, when, when we'll if all goes as we anticipate, be voting on this, and just figure out the question I've just asked, you know, are there some useful tools in there or not? And I, I just, I, and I apologize for not bringing this up in the summer. I hadn't focused on this component of it. So I it possibly could have gotten this resolved sooner.
Mr. Kovar, is that a feasible thing to like, look at and at least pull out those parts that are more, I guess, I would say, like, code enforcement issues that we don't want to make, we want to make sure don't get deleted?
So I think that, that it is potentially, and I will work with staff to, to at least identify the areas of concern. And, and hopefully come up with, with options for council to say, we want to go this way or we want to go that way. I think I don't know that there'd be a really another way to do it. You know, the, the other part of that, too, is, is there's potentially different layers of enforceability issues, but we don't get, need to get into that tonight.
Right. We can decide later on how to handle it, as long as we.
Right.
I think what I'm hearing from Councilmember Kovar is that he would be okay if we've at least identified
Yes.
that those sections. And then we can make decisions, determinations in the future on what we need to do with that. So it's not lost.
Okay. Understood.
And maybe if, if there's not really that many, maybe we can just wrap it up easily before September twenty-second and twenty-ninth. I, I don't want to assume it's going to be an unusually long process.
And, and it would also be helpful if, if, Councilmember Kovar, if you have specific areas of concern, if you can. Okay, thank you, sir.
I'll get that too.
Great. So I think we're done with the code changes, walking through that.
I'd like to just take a minute, a moment and check in with the city attorney to see if there are any other questions that he has for us. Since we haven't rehearsed this. Have we hit everything that, that you need us to hit tonight? In the code?
Yes, unless there are other things that you feel as if need to be addressed that we haven't talked about.
Nope. Let's quit while we're ahead. So I think the next thing is, if we're done with the code, so then the plan, just so everybody's clear on our plan, the plan is to then vote on these changes. First reading would be on the twenty-second, and then the second reading would be on the twenty-ninth. Okay, so if anyone has not done their homework yet and wants to go back and reread it and has questions, please send those to the city attorney as soon as possible. But we will be scheduling the first reading ordinance vote, the first reading vote of this on the twenty-second. Okay, now I will turn it back to the Subcommittee to talk about the resolution on the task force. Do you want me to pull that up as well? I know Councilmember Kovar has suggested some changes. Would you like me to share my screen with those?
We have. Yeah, sure. I, I was, I think we were not planning to go line by line through this, but simply to get a sense of whether this was something.
I can just, I can just
Correct.
I can just mention the, the two or three.
Before you do, let me just spend a moment. Before you do, please just let me spend a moment setting this up. So the the reason that we want to do this is first and foremost, this has been a priority for a while. There's been a recommendation from two city committees. There's been a lot of work done on this by staff, by council, by committees, various committee members. And we have not been able to bring this over the finish line. So we are hoping that by employing a task force that, a short-term task force of specific kinds of people with specific kinds of skills, which we've tried a couple of times already, it's worked pretty well, that we can focus and get this done. That's the first thing. It's not a question of, do we want this policy? I think we have talked as a council a couple of times during our priority setting, and we want to go in this direction. But how we do it, that's really one, that's really the question here. Secondly, there, the, as you heard in comments today, the Nuclear Free Zone Act is old. Lots happened since then. Climate Change Action Plan, fossil, city goals on greenhouse gas reductions, which have implications for fossil free fuel use, which has implications for nuclear use, nuclear nuclear energy. So there are a number of coordination issues, a number of relevancy updating issues that, that we were, the three of us were proposing, this group could take a look at also to look at the code changes, as you heard from some, from testimony this, this afternoon earlier today. So the two, so the two purposes, right? Not just one. One task force, two jobs. But I, we think it's, we think it's doable, and we think it's the best way to get this done. The timeframe we're talking about is from now till January. We're hoping to take advantage of the recruitment of, of city committee members generally to tack this on as another option for people who want to help plus also to look for specialized skills. And to then pick this up again in January with a couple of other items that the city attorney mentioned in July, we might pick up on in terms of code changes and updates. So I think that's it. And you have the draft text, and maybe we're bringing it up? The, a couple of people pointed out some technical changes. I'm hoping we don't have to dwell on them right now. But to talk about things that, that we might want to see if we can come to consensus on.
And, and I think there's just three or four things that I had talked about. They've changed slightly since I first proposed them based on the discussion. So we can go through the whole thing, but we don't have to, it's just three or four, and we don't have to worry about the technical ones. So the first one, it appears under where it says now therefore be resolved, I guess there's no line numbers in this one. Sorry, sorry for that. Right now, it says identify steps to define and to implement. I think what it should say is define and identify steps to implement, because there's two components to what we're asking them to do. We're asking them to define what the job is, and then what, what the meaning of sustainability is and how it works, and then to figure out the steps for implementing it. So what I'd like to suggest, which is a slight change from what I have there, is define and identify steps to implement.
Did I get it right?
Yep.
These look good to me. I think I had a question. I didn't know if we wanted to add it, but there's also been conversations at the county level of looking at sustainable investing and everything. And I, in Councilmember Kovar, and what you added here in point C, like, review best practices. You say including those communities, including those of similar size to Tacoma Park. I didn't know if we wanted to, since we're adding that, throw in something about and also look at, you know, what the county's doing.
Well, my, my colleague who serves on the working group, I recommended a much shorter version of this language, which I would be fine with, which would just be explore best practices and actions taken by other communities. And that way we could look at, have them look at whatever we want. So I know we can replace that. Explore best practices and actions taken by other communities. And, and strike what's in green, because that's really what we want.
The reason that I suggested that was because if we want a task force to do, to do, to do this relatively quickly, I feel like we don't want to give them a very big research task
Yep.
that could, as was written, could essentially not ever really be done without a lot of time and a lot of money. So I was hoping to pick, keep the spirit of it, to pare it down a little in terms of the actual resolution. And if we want to throw in, and the county, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think, but this works. I mean, the county.
Okay, we're good then.
I think the county encompasses, yeah.
So I think there's just two more, and I think it'll be very quick if we go down. So on C, where it says outreach, education, advocacy, and again, Councilmember DeBala pointed out, and I don't speak for her, but maybe she can mention that advocacy isn't actually a formal part of the assigned responsibilities of the, of the committee. And so I'd be comfortable, given that, just saying and outreach and education on nuclear weapons issues. That is one important piece of the work that they do that I think it's important to, to consider. So I would just propose saying, and outreach and education on nuclear weapons issues. If, if that's
As, as Councilmember Kovar said, if you look at the list of duties, advocacy is not actually one of them.
All right, so we're taking advocacy, sorry.
Yeah, just taking and advocacy out.
And then putting.
People don't think it's important, but this is literally talking about specific tasks assigned, and it's not in there.
And then, and then the last one, and I, it's, it's two result clauses further down. And I, I'm not sure I really hit on it right, but so I was suggesting maybe public policy development or something, or something like that. The reason I want, I was thinking one extra thing that would make sense is because I have a bit of a concern that let's say we hire a couple of people who understand municipal finance, a couple of people who understand environmental issues, a couple of people who get nuclear issues. And then you might have sort of three silos. And we might want people who are more generalists to help them be able to pull the thing together. And so maybe what we could say would be something to the effect of Seventh and Ninth City Residence, with to the extent possible, a mix of all these things. And then we can say public education policy development and outreach or something like that. And that way, we could maybe have just help ensure that the task force is able to really bring it across the finish line as, as my colleagues.
So should this say like, and/or? So it's not inclusive of, but.
It could. I would get rid of law and, and just say you know, policy development or something like that. I mean, I defer to others. You can see what I'm driving at. I don't, I'm not wedded to one specific set of words.
I, I think that the rest of the subgroup hasn't had a chance to consider this, but my opinion is that public policy is the one that we're not doing here. We, we are not changing nuclear policy. We are not changing sustainability policy. We are implementing them. And so I get, I totally understand and agree with the point that we want to be more flexible in, in who we pick if we don't get what we initially are looking for in terms of volunteers. So the to the extent possible makes a great deal of sense to me. The public policy part does not.
I see Councilmember C R C has her hand up.
Hopefully you can hear me.
I can't see you, but I can hear you.
I don't know. It just, it says no camera today. Um, so one of the things that we do need to keep in mind is that we talked through a very expedited timeline for this group. And, you know, so if we're bringing on folks who perhaps may not be as familiar with the targeted, more targeted aspects of what it is that, that the group is talking about, then you may have this unequal balance where folks who don't come to the table with the specific skills may either feel left behind because folks are going to be talking about something that's, that's not their area. Or it's going to take more time to make sure that everybody has the same level of information in order to make decisions. So I, I would just encourage us to, to think about, I think public policy is fine. But the, the larger the group, the more diverse in terms of skills and expertise is at the table, the more work it may take to kind of get everybody to, to at least have a base level understanding to move towards the point of making recommendations in a six-month period. And keep in mind, you're also talking about over the holidays. So, so that's the one thing that I, I would caution us about. You know, if we want to, per Councilmember Kovar's point, have more diversity in terms of backgrounds in the group, then we may want to consider adding more time to the group, knowing that they're going to need a little bit more time to kind of get up and running.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. Just to be clear, I mean, what my hope was that it could actually help not, that, that it wouldn't add to their work. But if you got someone who was the appropriate person to pull together three different strands of activity here, which will be taking place, which will be nuclear weapons issues, environmental sustainability, and then some aspects of, of the work that the Nuclear Committee does more day to day, and trying to figure out all three of those things. I could imagine groups of experts not being able to bridge the gaps. So I mean, to me, I'm fine if it says and/or, and to the extent possible, that means we don't have to. It's just, it's just an option for us to add someone with those backgrounds. We're not saying they must. So I, I'd be okay with the language as we proposed it here. I don't know how others feel.
Okay, well, people, we have time to, people, everyone can review this one more time. We don't have to, we're not voting on it tonight.
Okay. Well, people, we have time to, people, everyone can review this one more time. We don't have to. We're not voting on it tonight. So I think that was it for Councilmember Kovar's changes. Um, one question, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so we can all see each other. I can see you, I guess. Um, one question I had was whether or not there was a recommendation from the subcommittee or if staff had any input on the role of staff on the task force. And I raised this and, and again, we can, if staff needs to think about this and have a recommendation, um, there's, you know, what we can and cannot do given the capacity of our finance department greatly impacts. And what is, you know, difficult to track and other things and looking at those, some of those trade offs. But I also understand the strain on our, our financial, finance department and whether or not we have folks who are able to serve on the task force. So I just say that in terms of, I want to make sure if we aren't able to actually have a staff person be part of the task force, that there is time for staff input and the task force to work with staff members. Cause I would hate to see a task force go down the path of providing recommendations and doing a lot of work and then having the staff look at it and just be like, this is not feasible. At all. So I just, I, I want to think of where, and we don't have to come up with an answer tonight. I would just like us to think about how to address that. Um, cause I think that might be frustrating for everyone if that was to happen. Yeah, yeah, C Mager, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would say from, from staff standpoint, that would be our recommendation to council is I, I know staff capacity is issue and, and we'll continue to, to go through it and address it, but to have someone from staff, uh, whether that be someone on a finance team or another staff member present to be able to walk through and answer concerns in real time and, and share the, the organizational perspective to this task force would be very helpful. Uh, and as you've already stated, um, to have staff come in after the fact and for our subject matter experts to be able to, our goal isn't to shoot down ideas, uh, but if we have to come in and say, well, this won't work because of X, Y, or Z based off of our administrative or organizational needs and, and how we do things, um, we just want to make sure that we're, we're at the table.
Well, that, that's an ups because in, uh, on our part, because in the first resolved, number two, number one, number one, which is now D, work with consultants. I thought it said consultants and staff. So let's add that in because that, the, the idea was to build on previous staff efforts and advice and to work with staff to recommend the next steps. That, that's just words missing. And, um, as far as whether there's a staff person identified to support this or whether they are literally on the task force, I think our group was first wanting to see if this idea was flying at all, which it seems that it is. And so absolutely what's going to work the best for staff, no, that was, as I said, we didn't intend to leave that out. So I would, again, I would first say, let's add the words consultant and staff back in to line, mine has numbers. Page two, line nine.
I'm just gonna, I just wrote a note, add staff.
Okay, all right.
Everybody and yeah.
Great.
So we can do that. All right. So I think we're in good shape on this. Um, again, much thanks to all the hard work of the committee. Moving us forward on this, um, and thinking about this, particularly how we address the Nuclear Free Committee, I very much appreciate it and all the feedback that we received over the, um, the last few months on this. And so we will bring this back and this resolution will, so that we can get moving on the task force will be on the agenda for October, October. I mean, October, uh, September 22nd. So, um, all right, our last item this evening. I see our Public Works Director is still with us is an E V street sweeper. Um, I know there were some questions, um, about the sweeper. I don't know, Ms. Brithwaite, if you want to just address some things. I know there was an adjustment that needed to be made to the cover sheet. If you wanted to just give us some big picture overviews of this E V street sweeper.
Happy to, I, I think basically just to kind of capture this overall, I mean, it's the goal of the council as well as the staff to address sustainability and specifically energy reduction and greenhouse gas reductions. And to that end, anytime we take a look at vehicle replacement, we're looking at alternative fuel vehicles. Uh, so we knew that the street sweeper was coming up for replacement in this current fiscal year. Um, and during the budget process, we raised the issue to council because um, we identified that there was a green alternative, an alternative fueled option, but that it had a significant price tag associated with it. Um, so this discussion was had during the budget process earlier in the year and the council did, um, set aside funds uh, both in the stormwater fund as well as the equipment replacement reserve to cover the costs, the full cost of an E V street sweeper. Uh, so as we have looked into this, the E V sweeper is twice the cost of a regular diesel powered sweeper. Uh, they have a expected life of about 10 years. Because of the nature of the work that the sweeper does, it really, um, wear and tear is a big deal. Um, so our current sweeper is in dire need of replacement. It's barely functional. And we can't even get it going five days in a row without some replacement and repair needed. It is kind of the nature of the beast. So what we are looking at this evening is a continuation of that discussion that we had with council during the budget process. We've investigated and identified sources of the E V sweeper. We've had demos and test drives and, uh, taken a lot of time looking into the uh, fully into the option to make sure that the alternative that we were, uh, looking at, uh, would meet our needs. That said, uh, we do have the significant cost increase that's associated with an E V sweeper over a diesel fueled sweeper. Uh, so what you have before you this evening is a continuation of that budget process that moves forward with the purchase of the E V sweeper. It's just under $500,000. A regular diesel fueled sweeper is about half that at 250. We don't have before you a purchase recommendation for a diesel powered because the discussion during the budget process was to move forward with the E V sweeper. So if the council decides tonight that it doesn't want to you know, extend that price premium and that double price, uh, increase in cost uh, for the E V sweeper, then we'll need to withdraw this and come back to you with a more traditional fueled, um, street sweeper. Some of the questions that have come up in the, since we prepared this for your discussion, there was an error and I apologize on the cover sheet. The street sweeper, again, because we're a city of only 2.2 square miles, our, our sweeper is expected to work from March to October, uh, getting to every city street at least twice a, a month. Uh, we also use the street sweeper after winter storms when weather allows to pick up some of the sand and salt, but its primary use is during that March to October timeframe. Because of that, uh, the actual fuel reductions from a diesel fueled vehicle to a E V is about 700 gallons a year. About $1,800. Our, our current diesel fueled sweeper costs maintenance wise, not related to wear and tear, which will be the same in either option, the brushes, the tires. Uh, but the general mechanical, uh, maintenance, um, of a diesel fueled sweeper is fairly high. Our experience has been five to $15,000 a year. We anticipate that the, um, maintenance costs from the E V sweeper, similar to like an E V car, much less mechanical issues, uh, would be, um, $3,000 or less per year. That said, I certainly wouldn't want to be misunderstood in saying that this, that the E V sweeper will pay for itself over the course of its 10 year life. Uh, in a strict dollars to cents analysis, it will not. Um, the cost of the sweeper is, is very high. And again, as I mentioned, because of the use that we have and the small size of our city, uh, the savings in fuel and the savings in uh, maintenance costs won't cover that, um, added premium over the course of its 10 year lifespan. Trying to think if there's a, we, we did do a bit of analysis on the metric tons of, uh, CO2 reductions, which is the measure for greenhouse gas reductions. Again, because of the nature of the limited fuel use, because of, of, um, the small scope of of, um, the size of the city, that the, uh, E V sweeper would represent about a 3% reduction over the diesel fuel use annually for the city. Uh, if we were to look at it compared to the total fuel use, gas and diesel, all the city vehicles, it'd be almost 1% reduction if we went to, uh, the E V sweeper. Um, Councilmember Kostick had asked, uh, relative to the overall greenhouse gas emissions in the city, um, you know, kind of what that compares to the overall greenhouse commissions for vehicles, buildings and all, all combustible fuels is 151 metric tons of CO2, 151,000, I'm sorry, uh, metric tons of CO2 over the course of the year. So the, the amount of reduction we're talking about with this type of, um, switch to fuel use of this vehicle would be miniscule relative to, um, the overall greenhouse gas emissions of the city. So I don't, uh, I don't throw that in to cause confusion and just to be very clear that as we discussed this in the budget process, this was more a taking, uh, taking a look at what alternatives and opportunities exist. And as the council has directed us, when there are alternative fueled vehicles available, we explore them, we bring them to you for considerations. So that's what you have before you tonight. No question, we need to replace our street sweeper, uh, so we're anxious to get that done. It's up to you whether we want to proceed with the E V model or want to kind of go back to the drawing board with the more traditional fueled uh, sweeper, given the significant cost impact. I don't know if there's any other, other information that I didn't touch upon that the council would like to hear about.
Thank you.
And just another quick question. If, if we went in the other direction, uh, with the diesel uh, street sweeper, how long would it take you to put together a package and we could actually acquire it?
Uh, I would say several weeks to, uh, put together a proposal. We need to get pricing from the various manufacturers of the equipment. Uh, we certainly know who they are. It's a fairly, um, you know, small group of, of companies that provide these types of things. The million dollar question, of course, is when can we get it? Uh, we've purchased a pickup truck last fiscal year that we still haven't received. So like everywhere else in the country, uh, it's not a good time to buy, uh, mechanical equipment, uh, given the impacts of the pandemic and the impacts on supply chains. So we're probably looking six to eight months out from when we sign a contract with, uh, the manufacturer, the distributor to get a sweeper. So, um, we're anxious to get, uh, you know, get it moving just because we do know there'll be quite a lead time before we actually have it, uh, arrive and, and be able to be used.
Thank you for all your work putting this together.
And Councilwoman DeBala?
Yes, thank you for that summary. I just want to repeat is I don't think you made, maybe you did, uh, maybe I missed it. Um, there were other benefits that you saw to the electric sweeper, if I recall. Could you just restate that? So yes, there's the climate piece, but there are other reasons why you thought this was a good idea.
Yep, yep, yep. The, um, the, the, uh, E V model of street sweeper is remarkably quiet. And I don't know if you've ever, uh, been standing outside or walking down a street when our street sweeper passes. But it's definitely one of those things where you kind of want to put your fingers in your ears. It's very loud, mechanical piece of equipment. And so the E V sweeper is similar to what we've experienced with E V cars, uh, very quiet. Uh, so it's a real, uh, added benefit to the noise. Uh, the mechanical, mechanical operation is highly simplified in terms of, uh, the engine and, and that. Uh, so we do anticipate, uh, much more, um, on road miles and, and usefulness over the course of its life uh, versus the, uh, diesel mechanical engine, which just has a number of issues with breakdowns and, and repairs needed. The, uh, the model that we are, we are most impressed with is one that is quite popular in Europe. Um, it's a very compact piece of equipment, uh, has a fantastic turning radius. Uh, really, uh, they really thought through the operations of, of the equipment in terms of the, um, water, uh, sources that are used to dampen the dust. So it's really a highly evolved, very efficient piece of equipment that we're looking at. Um, the diesel models, uh, have come a long way, but they're just quite not as well crafted as, uh, those, uh, versions, um, that we've seen in the E V model. Uh, but the significant issues are noise reduction, uh, operability, maneuverability and the lack of the use of, um, you know, uh, diesel fuel and the resulting greenhouse gas emissions reductions.
And, and the other question I have is if we were to not spend the 250,000 additional money on this, what other alternative climate uses? Since that's really what the money's for, um, would you see that could potentially bring greater greenhouse gas reduction? So not to save the budget, but to what, to better invest in climate. What if anything would you recommend?
So with that, it truly is the million dollar question. Um, one of the benefits of, of our approach has been that we're looking at green alternatives as replacements come up. So it's within the course of our normal planned work. If, uh, if we, uh, we currently don't have, we have a pickup truck that's scheduled for, um, replacement this year. It had previously been an F 250. We are looking at an F 150. It's for our vegetation maintenance division. There is E V models available, so we're hoping that we can, uh, pursue an E V model. We're also looking at an E V, um, mower, uh, riding mower, which is on the schedule for replacement this year. Um, you know, there are so many possibilities in terms of if your real goal was what kind of, what was your biggest bang for the buck for $250,000 in greenhouse gas emissions? Uh, we probably could bring Gina here and she could, uh, brainstorm, uh, handful of ideas in probably fairly short order. Uh, one of the things is to continue to the, the process of looking at, uh, green alternatives when we're replacing vehicles. Technology is moving fast, but not quite fast enough for us. So we are still in the process of, you know, waiting for the E V market to catch up. Uh, converting police vehicles, uh, when we replace them to E V models is an obvious option. However, you know, there's a lot of, uh, additional issues with that and the police department has to be on board with that. If you're looking at any vehicle in the city, those are the ones that drive significant miles. No other city vehicle, whether it's our pool vehicles or our trash trucks or our public works vehicles, we're, we're not driving significant miles per year. The real vehicle mileage is, is in the police department vehicles because they're take home vehicles. So they're, they're the ones that are being driven 15 to 20,000 miles a year and where you can really kind of uh, capitalize on those, uh, fuel reduction issues.
Although you say there are other reasons to do this.
We done Councilwoman DeBala's.
Yes, I am. Thanks.
And I just want to be clear, we have this money in the budget.
Right.
We budgeted this. So it's, I, I just wanted to clarify, as Councilwoman DeBala said, we're, you're not coming to us and asking for
Right.
Over $200,000 wasn't budgeted. The amount for the, um, E V street sweeper is in the budget. Now we can debate whether or not we want to continue with it, but I just, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. You're, you're not asking us for an additional $200,000.
Correct. Um, it's deja vu. We had this conversation.
I know. So.
Which is to say you should, you know, always review and, and revise and, and, and make the best decisions, but it is included currently. We have actually 560 some thousand dollars in the budget for the E V sweeper. Um, split between the stormwater fund and the equipment placement reserve currently. Uh, once we got to the dollars and cents, the, the final price was just slightly under $500,000 for the model that we're recommending. for the model that we're recommending. So it was a slight reduction from what we had projected.
Right. And thank you for reminding us too, where this money is coming from. It is split between the stormwater fund and the equipment reserve. So I think sometimes when people hear these large amounts, they always go to general funds. This is money that, again, is in the reserves and in the stormwater. So thank you again for reminding us that.
Sure, yeah.
Councilmember Kostic and then Kovar.
Yeah, thank you very much for the information. And I know you had sent a number of answers to the questions I sent earlier. So thank you very much, Ms. Brayway. I think it's great that we're looking at EVs when we're switching over and I think it should be a top priority for us. One of the questions that I raised earlier during the budget discussion, and again in my email to you, was exactly what you, you said, which is if we have $250,000, what is the best way for us to spend that to achieve our climate goals? And so as huge of a supporter as I am of EVs, I, I still am concerned about whether this is the best use of those funds. And whether, you know, I, I think a, an EV stormwater or a street sweeper is, you know, a fairly straightforward purchase to, to help meet our climate goals and, and we can feel good about making the purchase and being a model for other communities. And all of those things are great. I'm just trying to figure out if that is actually spending the money in the wisest way possible. And so I would be very interested, and I, I think I mentioned it back when we had the discussion during the budget, I would be very interested in hearing from the sustainability manager if there are ways we could spend that money that is a bigger bang for our buck. And, and my understanding when we had the discussion during the budget process was that we did kind of want to look into some of those things, or at least I did. I'm not sure. I don't want to speak for others. One of the questions I have specific to the actual total cost over the 10 years, I was just doing kind of a back of the envelope as you mentioned the maintenance costs. Am I understanding correctly that it would be, if, if the, you, you said that the yearly cost would be five to five, to 15,000 for the conventional diesel version, but only 3,000 for the electric?
Yeah, that's been our experience based on the current diesel model that we've had in the past 10 years.
Okay, so, so really we're talking the expenditure for a conventional being somewhere between 300 and 400,000 over 10 years and the electric being somewhere around 530 to 550? Is that?
Yeah, I think in ballpark figures, that's, that's good. And again, we're, just to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, that's just the repair and maintenance and those types of costs. The tires, brooms, all that other stuff is identified in a separate budget. Those costs would be similar regardless of the type of fuel vehicle.
Okay, that's helpful. So it could be actually less than the 250 as an additional expenditure, or it could be somewhere around that. And then the mayor just raised a, a good point about the, where the funds are coming from with regard to the stormwater budget and the equipment reserve. If we weren't to make this purchase, but we were to use the, the funds for the diesel purchase, would we, would those additional, would there be funds available to spend towards some other climate action? I, I'm thinking maybe those stormwater funds could potentially be utilized. I assume the equipment reserve could not be.
Yeah, I, I would assume that we would take the cost of the equipment out of the equipment replacement reserve and not the stormwater fund, though it could be split and both reduced. This gets kind of into a snake chasing its tail kind of thing because when we established the budget, and if you recall the sustainability budget, we do have a budget identified for grants for businesses, grants for multifamily, single family retrofits, electrification studies, building performance standards. So Gina and our sustainability manager's office has a full panoply of programs planned and budgeted in this current budget. So it's not to say that, I'm sure if I said, hey Gina, you want some extra money? She would always jump at that opportunity. But given the staff size that we have and the full plate that she has in front of her, realistically, what we could do to add on would probably not be, would not likely be a programmatic type of thing. If there was something that we could do that was, you know, equipment purchase or something that we already had planned anyway, over this year or the next several years, that's probably the more likely way to do it because we, we only have so much bandwidth in terms of, of what we're doing. Similarly, with the stormwater budget, as you know, we have a five-year CIP. So we have identified projects for both this year as well as into the future. One of the things that we're looking at with ARPA funds is to, you know, do some of the future planned projects. One very large project, the Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration Project with ARPA money, as we think it'll be a viable project that meets, meets the requirements. So those are, that's a project that potentially could not have to use stormwater funds and could use ARPA funds for. But that being said, again, we have, we have a staff capacity issue in terms of moving additional projects for where we have a full plate of projects that we're implementing currently. And so that's, that's really all we have the bandwidth to do unless we start looking at additional staffing or engineering support to supplement, you know, the, the staff hours needed to plan, design and, and implement any new projects.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely appreciate the, the fact that it would require staff time to do some of these other projects. Yeah, if there's any additional information you can share between now and the vote, I'd appreciate it. I do, like I said, I really do want us to move towards EVs and I, I share the, the goal very much of meeting our climate change, addressing climate change and meeting our goals there. I just want to make sure that we're doing it in the best way possible. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kovar?
Thanks. Just a few quick questions and thanks for the presentation. Very helpful. I more or less agree with my colleagues that if we could at least understand what an option would be for the other 250,000 that might move the dial further in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, I'd be interested in at least knowing what that would be. You know, I'm, I'm not a big fan of purchasing offsets. I, I don't know whether just buying some other piece of equipment is the answer, but if the reality is that it reduces our overall greenhouse gases by 1%, that's 1% that we wouldn't otherwise have, so that's not something I feel upset about. If that's what we ended up doing. But on the other hand, if we could take the 250,000 and do something different that would reduce it by more, I, I think it would be nice to just know that. Then just two other more specific questions, three actually. You gave a lot of detailed responses to a resident from Ward 1 who had asked his own question. The one I was curious about that you did respond to, but I just want, if you could comment just a bit more about that is, you know, does the, it says a very small area that the resident asked, well, going up and down hills and so on, does that change much in terms of performance or is that pretty much, there aren't that many big hills in the city?
Well, there are if you're biking them, I must say. But in general, our understanding based on the test, test drives we've had and the conversations we've had with the distributor is that the topography of Tacoma Park would not significantly impact the operational functionality of the equipment, that it's fully within its, its ability to do. We're assuming an overnight charge. We're assuming a six to seven hours operating, which, you know, for our staff that works an eight-hour day with a lunch hour, that's well within the timeframe that the sweeper would be expected to be at on the road. It doesn't require any special charging stations. We can plug it right into a, an outlet, an exterior outlet on 110 power. Again, because we're doing an overnight charge, this isn't a quick charge. We, you know, park it at 4:00 PM and it just needs to be ready by 8:00 AM the next morning. So it's kind of ideally suited for that.
You mentioned also that it would need less maintenance. Could it last longer than 10 years as a result of that? Or is it still 10 years is kind of the life for it?
My guess is, again, because of the, the nature of the equipment itself, all the sand and grit and salt and corrosive material that it, it sucks up and processes, you know, it just beats, beats these pieces of equipment significantly. There's just real wear and tear that they experience. It's all, you know, stainless steel interior and, you know, they beef, beef it up so that it can withstand some of that type of corrosive impact. But it really, after 10 years, at least our experience with the diesel power ones have been that after 10 years, their, the bodies are just shot.
Okay. And last question, not specifically about this, but just something I'm curious about. I noticed we don't close off one side of the street. For example, when the street sweeping is happening as they do in other cities sometimes. And so that makes it harder to get into every little spot. Is there a reason for that? Is that something that we've ever contemplated? And don't go into a really long issue response.
It was nine, it was almost 11 o'clock. I'm just not understanding what closing off, I'm not sure.
Well, they don't let people park.
All to your side of the street parking. Gotcha. Yep, 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 yep. All I'll say is sign pollution there and, and, and you really need to be able to meet exactly your, your schedule if you're going to do something like that.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I supported putting the money in the budget at the time we did that. I think that at this point, I have to tell my colleagues that I'm kind of leaning towards not supporting the purchase of the electric street sweeper at this time. I think with the uncertainties of the economy going forward and the unconvincing discussion so far of the savings as compared to alternative approaches, I'm leaning towards saying that we ought to go with the diesel at this time. But I look forward to hearing, you know, what those alternatives are at the next time we talk about this. Thank you.
I don't want to put on too, too hard of a, a point, but, and, and certainly City Manager Fox can help with this, but, you know, we're really at capacity. So there's not going to be any new programming that we're going to be able to do with the financial savings that we'll be getting if we don't go the EV route and instead do the, do the diesel route. There may be other departments that would be able to take advantage of those funds. And particularly when we're looking at ARPA funding and project programming coming up. I, I just don't want anybody to be under the impression that after we've gone through the whole budget process and established sort of what our plan is for FY '22, that we'll be able to quickly shift gears and say, oh, instead of that, we're going to do this with the $250,000. We won't, I don't anticipate that we'll have a programmatic approach for those funds should we decide to go the diesel route instead of the EV route.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that said, it's been a very difficult discussion that we've had internally. You know, it, it does pit two things together and it's very, very substantial cost.
Yeah, I appreciate your clarification on that. But, and I will say that, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that we should move the money into some program. In fact, the, the right answer may be not to spend the money at this time. So again, I look forward to the presentation, so.
Great. I'll just say I support moving forward with this purchase. I thank the Director of Public Works for answering all these questions and helping us think through it. I think the EV option, we need a new street sweeper. I think we have stated as a council in the city that we want to move towards more of an EV fleet and moving away from the diesel. There are other advantages as the Director of Public Works has mentioned in terms of noise and maintenance. And I think given where the funding sources for this out of the stormwater fund and the equipment reserve, that this is the right move for us. I just want to underscore again, these are not general funds that can be easily moved around for other programming, even if we have the staff capacity to do that. So I just want to say that I, I do support us moving forward on this. And, you know, I do think it is by our city and other cities purchasing EV vehicles and doing this, this is how we actually advance the technology and have companies build more and invest in this. And so if we're not going to continue to make these commitments, we're not going to see the advances that need to be made. And so I'm fully supportive of us moving forward with this. If we can get additional information that has been requested from the city council. But I think we're going to keep this on the agenda for a vote on the 22nd, unless I hear from staff that they would like at least another week on the 29th, but we can discuss that. But I'd like to keep it on the agenda for a vote either the 22nd or the 29th. I don't think, I think council members are making up their minds on this and I'm not sure having more time. I think we'll get more information, but I, I think people will either vote for it or won't vote for it. And then you can go back, if, if it doesn't pass, you can go back to the drawing board on diesel.
Yep, definitely. And I think my, my assumption at this point is we've provided all the information that you all need to make a decision. If there's something missing, please do let me know and I'll be happy to provide that.
I think the only other thing goes back to the request from Councilwoman Kostic is if you had in this year's budget, and it's not, I, I don't want to say it's $250,000 because it's not, but what, you know, is there something else we would do on it to offset and work on our climate change? Did I express that correctly, Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, I think so too. And I, I would also be interested in understanding whether, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around the seventh flight, so this might not make sense. But I'm thinking this 250 is for a purchase that we've been using for 10 years. So we may not use all 250 in this fiscal year, but could there be some longer stretch out of that that might be more valuable towards meeting our goals? I don't know if that's coherent enough, but that's sort of, if there's some thought on that. And yes, I think if there's something in the budget that was left out, that was considered or could be supplemented, that, that would be useful.
All right, I will.
And again, there would have to be money that could be allocated for the equipment reserve or the stormwater. So it would have to be something that was not in that. I just want to, sorry, I keep saying that, but I just want to make it clear that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we'll take a look at that. If there's nothing immediately evident, we kind of put together the budget that we intended for this year. And so there's not anything that jumps to mind, but we'll certainly take a look again.
Okay. Councilwoman DeBala?
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly, if there is a significant difference in how quickly one of these vehicles might appear, why do I feel like the electric one might come a little quicker?
I don't know.
That question that if you have any insight into that, you might come back on the 22nd with that.
We have certainly asked and of course the distributors are being very cagey with their answers. You really won't know until it finally shows up. They'll say, oh, two to four months, and then six months later, it's six to eight months. And then, you know, they're just looking to make the sale. And the, the reality, I think to some degree, the reality is still evolving and nobody knows.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Brayway. We appreciate all your work on this and answering, oh, Councilwoman Cersei. Ooh, you, you almost made 11 o'clock. You're killing me.
I'm sorry, I was debating, should I keep my mouth shut or should I just be transparent? So I decided on the, on transparency. So, so my concern, I, I align myself with Councilmember Siemens in the concern regarding the cost. I think that one of the things that we may need to think about is how the advancement in EV tech aligns with our equipment replacement lineup. And although the timing may not be right for the street sweepers because the tech is just too new in that regard, for other vehicles or other equipment that comes up in the reserve, we may be able to reallocate this, these dollars towards replacing those. I think EV is probably going to be more expensive down the line, like that's just going to happen. But I think there's this sweet spot of timing when the technology has advanced enough to where the cost of, the cost difference isn't so great. So that's something that I would just like to keep in mind like going forward. I don't think we need to allocate it towards additional programming. I think it should be used for the purpose of advancing our EV objective, but just make. but just making sure that we're looking at those equipments that, where that cost differential isn't so great and using these dollars towards replacement of those in, in terms of EV. I was quick.
Thank you. It still, it still hasn't changed to 11:01. Anyone else? All right, not seeing any. I think that is the end of our meeting tonight. Just as a quick reminder, we do not have a regular council meeting next Wednesday evening because of the, because of Young Kupoor. We do have a special meeting with the Tree Commission on Tuesday night and a closed session on next Thursday night. So that's our week next week. Thank you to everyone. Congratulations to our city manager for completing his, very successfully, his first city council meeting. Thank you very much and hopefully we'll see everyone around. Have a good evening.